We celebrate a lot of different New Years here at City Hall and in Los Angeles, which is one of the many reasons that I love this city.
The 4th Annual Latina Conference gave Latino women an opportunity to come together and share their stories of success, and hopefully inspire other women that they too can achieve their dreams.
I think it's a really important project that's happening because these are women that are really, really working to change their lives for the better. And I think that each one of us has a responsibility to our community to show that it can be done.
Well, this is an opportunity for us to provide opportunities for women to become more empowered in our community. We appreciate the unique world that women play, and this is an opportunity for us to provide speakers, information, inspiration for making it, for being successful in a variety of ways.
And try to compete for a higher level than just being a Level 1 operator. Right now, I'm at Level 3, and I'm trying to go higher.
That creates another community that you are able to connect with women in that they have succeeded in different ways, and you don't feel that you are on your own.
People are coming together to celebrate one race, especially women. How back then, they didn't really get a lot of opportunities, but now we have opportunities to do whatever we want to do.
This year's conference focused on career development, financial literacy, parenting, and more. And while we're on the topic of strong women, we meet one local businesswoman who is a prime example of how hard work and perseverance leads to success.
Some days, it felt like we were just going up a mountain, pushing boulders, having to slay dragons, and it's really difficult. At times, I felt like giving up, but then you will get a win, even a little win, sometimes a big win, like when someone would believe in us or decide to carry our line in their store. And then you really just soak that in as motivation to keep going. Together's purpose is sustainable fashion made locally in Los Angeles to help redirect the climate crisis using good fashion. We can support our community, and by being local, we can watch over everything to make sure it has the highest integrity standards and there's no cut corners. Another reason that it's important to be local is it's more sustainable. There's less of a carbon footprint. We're not shipping things from overseas using planes.
This L.A. Women's Entrepreneurship Day, we're pleased to be able to present among our speakers Lily Charazi Barrett of Together California. She's been able to establish a successful, sustainable apparel manufacturing company in downtown Los Angeles, and she's going to share her journey of entrepreneurship with us.
I am honored that the mayor's office chose me to speak at City Hall on November 19th. The goal is to inspire other women that they can have their businesses too.
Women's Entrepreneurship Day is going to be a day of inspiration and tools for entrepreneurs to really help them to start a business and grow. Mayor Garcetti is a real proponent of gender equity in his administration. Fully half of his senior staff are women. The mayor's office of community business is actually an office within his Office of Economic Development, and our purview is to help businesses to start and grow in the city of Los Angeles.
There's tons of fish in the sea, tons of different vendors, suppliers here in Los Angeles, and that's why it's such a great place to work.
For more info on Women's Entrepreneurship Day, visit womenseday.org. They're creepy and they're crawly, and for many of us, they can be a little bit scary. But for some people, spiders are beautiful and gentle creatures that are more scared of us than we are of them. Anna Marcos pays a visit to the Spider Pavilion at the Natural History Museum, and it's just in time as Halloween draws near.
To some, they are creepy crawly things; to others, they are beauty in motion. The new Spider Pavilion that just opened at the Natural History Museum is crawling with eight-legged web weavers of all kinds, hundreds of them, and they are everywhere.
So could we be walking and a spider falls on top of us, one of these big giants?
You never want to say "never," but generally speaking, when people are coming in, it doesn't happen. They're really safe and comfortable in their webs. They're very secure. They're not dropping or falling on people.
It was really fascinating, much bigger than I thought they would be, and they really kind of are everywhere. So what is it people tell you, the reason that they're scared of spiders?
Mostly, it's the legs.
Yes, all those mini long hairy legs doing things. Val Hatcher, a guide at the Spider Pavilion and the museum, says these insects are things of beauty.
You're a spider lady?
I am a spider lady, yes.
Didn't you know that without these spiders, we humans might starve to death? According to our guide, the spiders eat all the bugs and insects that might otherwise gobble up our food.
The mist is here. We do want to make sure that our spiders have everything they need, both food and water.
To Hatcher, the eight-legged creatures are not just beautiful, they are artistic. They are clean, neat, and industrious. We saw many quite focused on their life's work, weaving all those webs. Oh, and they recycle too, often eating their tattered webs in order to rebuild them.
One's eating another spider.
Oh, it's eating?
Yeah.
That one's eating.
And these spiders can be bloodthirsty cannibals. Up, down, and all around, the creatures lurk, waiting to see who falls in their web, but no need to fear.
If something big and scary walks by them, their number-one response is to run away and hide, so they want to get as far away from us as possible. They are way more scared of us than we are of them.
It was fun, overwhelming. We were a little scared at first, but then we started to relax and started to see how cool they were.
Are you bigger fans now?
No. I'd still probably call my mom.
Some of the spiders on display include the barn spider, the garden orb weaver, as well as the spiny-backed and common orb weaver spiders. For more information, visit nhm.org and click on the Spider Pavilion. It was a celebration of all things Korean as the 46th Annual Korean Festival and Parade brought out hundreds of spectators to enjoy the colorful floats, performers, musicians, and cuisine.
We're here to enjoy the Korean culture and eating Korean food and spend time with our families.
I'm blessed this year. I've been selected to be the grand marshal. Everybody, let's celebrate this phenomenal festival in the Koreatown area.
It's a great day here, Koreatown Parade. Even the rain couldn't keep us away.
I love it. I love that Los Angeles is a collection of different cultures. I think that's why it's such a popular city, because people from anywhere can come together.
It makes me feel so proud. Okay, it makes me think once again that the color of the skin doesn't matter at all, especially when we live here in Los Angeles, right? It's the heart of La Corazon de Diversidad, it's the heart of diversity.
Deja mi vida.
It's not every day that the contributions of the immigrant communities are recognized. That's why the city of L.A. paid a special tribute to a group of people who helped build L.A. into the city it is today.
Brazos were looked down upon, and then when they got here in the United States, there was a lot of racism. 95% of the people who work in California in agriculture are actually Mexican descent. So for me, the Brazos, now that the stigma has gone away, I think it's a good thing.
I feel happy that they're being recognized for all their hard work.
Especially in these times when, from this administration, so many attacks, so many lies, so many criticisms of men and women today who work so hard for this economy, for this nation, it's especially important.
I couldn't be more proud to join you today in commemorating the service of so many immigrant communities. It was the immigrants of Mexico that helped build this city, that helped build this state, and helped build this United States of America.
Angelino's celebrate The Beatles' 50th Anniversary of their iconic Abbey Road album. A new campaign is launched to help boost census participation, and officials hope a new high-tech crosswalk will cut down on accidents. All this in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti has joined a new campaign to help boost the 2020 U.S. Census Participation. Census Champions has been formed to commit to a fair and accurate count, as well as raising awareness on the local economic efforts.
California keeps giving money away to the rest of the country when we don't participate. So I want that money back. We made that money. We sent that money. We should get that money, participate in the census.
Councilmember David Ruh, L.A. Department of Transportation GM Salita Reynolds, Office of L.A. County Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, and community leaders unveiled the HAWK Beacon, a high-intensity activated crosswalk on Sixth Street between Fairfax and Carson Avenues. The new crosswalk and signal has been shown to reduce the rate of accidents.
This is the first, it's an exciting day because this is the first HAWK Beacon that we have in the city of Los Angeles, but this will not be our last.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, Board of Public Works President Kevin James, and the legendary Sir Patrick Stewart, joined together to celebrate the 50th Anniversary of The Beatles' iconic Abbey Road album. Officials also dedicated a crosswalk on Vine Street and unveiled a new City of L.A. sign at the Capitol Records Tower.
It's 50 years. It's one of their, you know, signature record companies where they recorded, and we're right in front, and we get to celebrate Abbey Road's 50th Anniversary with a crosswalk in Hollywood. How much better does it get?
Jazz filled the air as some of the best musicians gathered for the 43rd Annual Watts Towers Jazz Festival. The long-running event celebrates the culture and musical history of the iconic Watts neighborhood.
This is the 38th Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival and the 43rd Annual Simon Reveal Watts Towers Jazz Festival. One of the things that we do is to ensure that our constituency have access to live musicians, no pre-recorded music.
I think to be able to keep it going constantly throughout the years, it's been great. People get together.
I mean, you look around at the community people here, they're all here enjoying it, taking in events, and what can you, I mean, it's free. You come in, you sit back, you get some live jazz. Yesterday, they had the Drum Fest. Everybody playing drums, they love it. It's excellent for the community.
I think what the festival is doing, it's giving the people a sense of belonging. It's saying that we care about you, we care about the people that are in Watts, we want to bring good things to the community, and we want people to embrace the goodness.
Young, old, that's what we're about. That's why we're here, so that people understand Watts is rich, it has something to give.
How do you get kids interested in exercise? Well, you make it fun, that's how. And one council member proves he's got the winning formula. Are these kids up for the fitness challenge? Judging by their smiles, yes, they are.
I like the gymnastics, that's my favorite part because I love doing gymnastics. It's also fun being here with friends, having fun, laughing.
The Good Times taking place at Bellevue Recreation Center in Silverlake, site of gymnastics, yoga, and other activities to get kids pumped over physical fitness. The challenge is hosted by City Councilman and former competitive gymnast Mitch O'Farrell.
When children feel good, they do better in school. When you exercise and eat nutritious meals, you have a better quality of life.
Around 100 fifth graders from local schools are taking part in this fitness challenge. Today's very special guest is Olympic swimmer and reality TV producer John Moffett. It was around the fifth grade when Moffett discovered competitive swimming before making the 1980 and 1984 Olympic teams. Moffett is also the Emmy-winning producer behind CBS's The Amazing Race.
Learning how to work out and learning to deal with the discomforts of being an athlete, it really carries on throughout your life. It teaches you how to deal with other people. It teaches you how to forge on through adversity and forge on when you don't win. And these are all super valuable lessons that all of us can take with us throughout the rest of our lives.
The Department of Wrekin Parks, with its variety of youth programs, is proud to be a partner.
High rates of obesity in children and diabetes, and it's really something that we really need to focus on.
This is a really uplifting, positive day, and maybe this will be a source of inspiration to help someone to turn the corner, to maybe set them in a nice, new, good direction.
Students from Alexandria, Fletcher Drive, Vine Street, and others all took part. Do you love comics, gaming, and sci-fi? Then you won't want to miss Comic-Con. No need to go to Italy to get a taste of an authentic piazza, and save the date for Indigenous Peoples' Day. All this and things to do. L.A. Comic-Con is returning to Los Angeles for its ninth year. Tens of thousands of comics and graphic novel fans joined forces in a quest to experience one of the most diverse and celebrated pop culture events in the country. This event plays host to over 800 diverse artists and vendors selling comics, collectibles, art, apparel, and everything in between. Don't miss L.A. Comic-Con, October 11th through the 13th, at the L.A. Convention Center. For tickets, visit showclicks.com. The Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles presents Taste of Italy, L.A.'s premier Italian food and wine event. For one evening, the heart of historical downtown Los Angeles is transformed into a charming Italian piazza where guests can enjoy world-class wines and live entertainment. The Taste of Italy L.A. serves up deliciousness Saturday, October 12th, beginning at 5:00 P.M. Indigenous Peoples' Day 2019 brings recognition and celebration to the city of Los Angeles. This year's theme will focus on the past, present, and future, with a call to action for our state and federal lawmakers to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Answer the call and show your love at Indigenous Peoples' Day, Sunday, October 13th, from 4:00 to 9:00 P.M., at Los Angeles City Hall and Grand Park. For more information, call Councilmember O'Farrell's District Office at (213) 473-7013. Don't miss it. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. We'll see you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. City Council meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. And we are live on Channel 35, City View Channel, and welcome those who are listening on council audio. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomfield, Bonn, and Buscaino. Sadio, Harris, Dotson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present and accor, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Bonn moves. Councilmember O'Farrell seconds. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Corretts moves. Councilmember Weezer seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Thank you. If we can have everyone rise for the flag salute. I'm actually going to recognize the 41st Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Antonio Vieragosa, to join us in the flag salute. At the center podium, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for reminding me. A pledge of allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome. Welcome back. Okay, if I can direct your attention to agenda members, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue. Item 1A to December 3, 2019, item 23 to October 15, 2019, and to continue item 58 to October 29, 2019.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Next?
Items 1 through 19 are items noticed for public hearing. The department recommends that item DNF be received and filed due to fees being paid in full and to ownership change. And, Mr. President, there are cards on all items.
Very good. We'll hold those on the desk.
Next is items 20 through 62. Those are items for which public hearings have been held. And, Mr. President, there is a request to hold item 55, as well as cards should be taken for 24 through 30 and 62.
Very good. Aside from those on the desk, any other items to be held by members? That's next.
Yes, Mr. President.
Very good. Let's vote on the balance, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next item?
Next, Mr. President, are items 63 through 70, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Those items are now before us. Any cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There is a request to hold number 66 for an amendment, and there is also cards on all items, 63 through 70, sir.
Okay. Those items will be held.
Next are items 71 and 72. Those are items scheduled for closed session, and since those were waived from Budget and Finance Committee, a public hearing must be held, and there are cards on 71 and 72, sir.
Very good. 71, 72 will be held on the desks.
And, Mr. President, that takes counsel to presentations. Items called special or public comment, sir?
Very good. Let's turn to Mr. Corretts for a special presentation. Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours.
Colleagues, it's my honor and privilege to recognize some very special people here at City Hall. You see them every day when you wait in line for coffee, or if you pop in between committee meetings for a spicy Thai noodle or a delicious pastry. And today, it gives me great pleasure to honor and recognize our wonderful colleagues at Homeboy Diner at City Hall. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, it's my distinct honor to recognize your outstanding service and tireless dedication at the Homeboy Diner. We're most grateful for the warm welcome you give to every guest at City Hall while striving for a better future. What began in 1988 as a way of improving the lives of former gang members in East Los Angeles has become a blueprint for over 400 organizations around the world, from Alabama and Idaho to Guatemala and Scotland. In 2014, Homeboy Industries went global. Today, Global Homeboy's network's mission is to work with organizations across the globe to create therapeutic communities that offer job skills training, cost-free programs and services, and social enterprise employment. Here at City Hall, we have fine examples of how the program works so well. Every day, we know these amazing individuals who show up day in and day out, and each has a story. We've gotten to know you and continue to grow and work together as a team, and each of you are a valuable part of our own city family. And now I'd like to ask our former mayor, Antonio Vieragosa, to say a few words, if he would.
Yeah, our cat flies have gotten worse. Welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you.
Feel at home when I get those boos. It's great to be here today. Councilmember Price invited me to be here for the ceremony to acknowledge the contributions of Dotson Wilson, which we'll speak to in a minute, but it's fortuitous that today we honor Homeboy Industries, Homeboy Cafe. I have a long history with this organization. I always say, "But therefore, the grace of God go I." And some of you know my story. And when I look at the young men and women who G-Dog has worked with, Father G., he has done miracles in giving these people a second chance. And I'm proud that when I was in the legislature, I worked with them on tattoo removals, worked them to get their first office on First Street, which was in the 14th District back then. The bakery that then burned down, and working with Councilmember Reyes, we, the city family, helped to get Homeboy their restaurant and bakery and everything they have there on Alameda. And then the cafe. When we lost our lease to an entity that was here, we said, "Let's bring in Homeboy." We brought them at the airport. And as was mentioned, 400 organizations are replicating the work that these people have done. So I couldn't be prouder to be here, because what you see here is hope. What you see here is the future. What you see here is redemption and change. And I think that's what we acknowledge today, and I wanted to be here to thank these young men and women and wish them luck as they go on into the future. I think that's what this council's about, and that's why you honor them today. Thank you, Councilmember Corretts, for appropriately honoring these great people. Thank you.
So, colleagues, it makes me very proud to talk about these fine young women and men that we're honoring today. First, Johnny Iglesias. Over the course of the past five years, your reliability and commitment to being kind, hardworking, and a true role model for all in your life is unparalleled. So we'd like to give you a certificate. Dennis Zamoran. We're most grateful for your warmly welcoming every guest and worker at City Hall, always while striving for a better future. In the past five years, your sense of humor and kindness have made an impression on all that you encounter, so thank you. Daniel Diaz. Over the course of your time at Homeboy, you've been focused and have come in every day bringing your all to the table. Your soft heart and an open mind have made quite an impression on all that you encounter. Congratulations to your growing family on welcoming your newest addition, Baby Michael, and congratulations for this award. Jason Osby. Throughout your years with the diner, you've been Myrna's right hand, and thank you for all of your patience, commitment, and hard work. You've made the city a better place to live, work, and eat. Dulce Gonzalez. In your time at the diner, you've worked extremely hard, and you've been able to accomplish many of your goals. You're kind and determined, and you're a role model to all young women. We're certain your five sons are so proud of their mama. Congratulations. Nicholas Lopez. Nicholas, you've served as a true role model for all, and your time with the diner and your work with your ministry, you've demonstrated the qualities of an outstanding leader. Congratulations on your new position with the Bureau of Street Services in the Urban Forestry Division. We're very happy to have you. Enrique Reyes. Enrique, your dedication to Homeboy is apparent in everything that you do, from always showing up early and always having an open mind, so we very sincerely congratulate you for your great work. And now I want to take a special moment to talk to you about Myrna Tellas. When asked about her mentorship, each and every worker told us, "Myrna is our mentor. She is our role model." So let's give her a big hand. Myrna, you've been a true role model for all the staff at the diner, and since it first opened eight years ago, you've gone above and beyond being committed and personally invested in the lives of the City Hall Diner staff. You've created a welcoming environment and a safe place for your staff to thrive at their jobs and then their lives. The success of your staff members is deeply rooted in the attention and dedication that you give to them every day. And we appreciate your work in ensuring the skills that they have. to them every day. And we appreciate your work in ensuring the skills that they have will help them make decisions and propel them into a better life. So, we're so grateful for your indispensable role here at the City Hall and with your team members, and we want to wish you the greatest of success in all your future endeavors." Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Another round of applause for Homeboy Industries, ladies and gentlemen, amazing work that you do. We love you, and we bless you and honor you. Okay. Mr. Spindler, that's your last warning. You know the routine here, okay? Do not disrupt this meeting. You will be asked to leave. That's your final warning. Mr. Price, floor is yours for a presentation.
Good morning, colleagues. Today is a monumental day, because we're going to be recognizing and honoring my friend and California governmental legend, E. Dotson Wilson. If you want to know just how legendary he is, let's roll the video.
The Assembly is now in session.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson.
I take this obligation freely.
I take the obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
He is singularly able, in terms of his skills as a parliamentarian, his knowledge of the rules and regulations, and the history of this House.
Nominated by then-Speaker Willie L. Brown, E. Dotson Wilson has served the people of California as the Assembly's chief clerk and parliamentarian since January 1992.
Dotson Wilson will be the first African-American in America to assume the responsibility as chief clerk of any legislative body.
Potential laws live or die when members vote, but that voting happens because of Dotson Wilson and his team.
As the chief clerk and parliamentarian, and an excellent staff operation of 30 individuals, our job is to make sure that the process runs smoothly, and that it runs efficiently. The focus is not on what we do, but the focus is on the elected members of the Assembly. Because the 80 members of the Assembly can do something that no one else in the state of California can do. They represent their constituents and represent the policy that is voted on.
Seen by many as the ultimate authority on parliamentary procedure, Wilson himself defers to a greater authority.
So, the ultimate authority on legislative procedure, parliamentary procedure, and laws that are adopted by this body are all guided by key provisions of the state constitution.
Wilson's natural curiosity and youthful interest in public policy, coupled with his parents' guidance, started him on this path as a child.
But I understood at an early age how laws impact our lives. I may have not understood it in a very clear fashion, but I remember when my parents would tell the story, my mother in particular, the story of how they were discriminated against when they went to purchase a home in the late 1950s. And I said, "Well, how can that occur?" Well, there were laws up through the 1960s that said, "Based on your race or religion, you could be denied the opportunity to live in a certain community, no matter how much money you had." And it was right here in this chamber. The legislature narrowly passed legislation in the early 1960s to prohibit discrimination in housing. So, that was at the heart of what I knew and learned about politics.
Beginning as an Assembly fellow in 1979, Wilson worked his way up to become deputy chief of staff to Assembly Speaker Brown.
The clerk will read the roll by counties.
If there were any doubts as to whether he could put aside his partisan background to embrace the institution as a whole, Wilson soon put those fears to rest.
I've worked closely with Republican as well as Democratic staff. I look forward to the challenge of working in a bipartisan fashion. Making sure that we provide a nonpartisan framework for the members to conduct their business is critical to the process. In a given two-year session, we're going to record 250,000 votes on behalf of the elected members. 100% accuracy is critical to that process. You have to keep in mind that fewer than 4,000 individuals have ever been elected to serve in this body dating back to 1849.
And Wilson himself has worked with nearly 500 of them during his tenure. With the utmost respect for the traditions of the House, Wilson's efforts to modernize the way the Assembly conducts business include the expansion and professionalization of the chief clerk staff.
The clerk will open the roll.
Electronic voting.
All members vote who desire to vote.
And saving paper by allowing members to review bills digitally.
This is how the California Assembly floor looked in 1929, when bills were taken up. Thousands and thousands of pages of bills. It looked like this in 1979. It looked like this in 1989 and 1999. In the early 2000s, we were able to satisfy that imprint requirement. As long as that bill is displayed on the members' laptops, or now on the members' tablets, we'd be satisfying the constitutional requirement. That was perhaps one of the most significant technological changes that took place here in the California Legislature.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
E. Dotson Wilson. One man who has left an indelible mark on the people's house.
I'm not sad. I'm actually excited, because I've been afforded the opportunity to work in the greatest legislative body in the world.
Clerk will close the roll.
Normally, I would miss the green carpet, but I'll make sure that I have a picture of it close by, and I'll have a green carpet at home, so that I can always be reminded of what an extraordinary institution this is.
Are you really going to get a green carpet at home?
That's what I said.
Colleagues, neighbors, and friends, as you saw, Dotson is a giant in the state of California. And on this day, a few of his friends have gathered to give him a proper send-off, now that he's retiring as chief clerk and parliamentarian of the California State Assembly, after 40 years of public service. For 27 years, Dotson served as chief clerk, becoming the first African-American ever to ascend to such a powerful position in the United States. He would go on to make history twice by getting re-elected to that office 14 times, making him the longest continually-serving Assembly chief clerk in California history. Simply put, he's an icon. He's a pioneer. He's a trendsetter in state government. Several of my colleagues have had the privilege of working with him during their tenure in the State Assembly: Then-Speaker Wesson, Councilmembers Bloomingfeld, Sadio, Coretts, Krikorian, City Attorney Mike Fuer, and myself included. Dotson's long list of accomplishments and contributions to California are immeasurable. In his role as chief clerk and parliamentarian, he was the ultimate authority on rules and procedures, the guardian of the state constitution. For those who might not be familiar with the Dotson Wilson American success story, this is his journey. He's the son of an immigrant mother. He began his career in the California State Assembly Chamber as a fellow in 1979. Coincidentally, that fellowship class would also include another great, Curtis Ernest, my chief of staff. When he began his career, Dotson was a young man with the larger-than-life dreams. Bold, outspoken, determined. Legend has it that even Dotson once out-debated Howard Jarvis, the author of Proposition 13. He would go on to serve on the staff of Speaker Willie Brown, eventually rise to the position of deputy chief of staff. Ultimately, it was Speaker Brown who would nominate Wilson for chief clerk. In 1992, he was elected clerk and parliamentarian. Having overseen thousands of proceedings, Dotson witnessed some of the most progressive policies and landmark legislation in our state's history. He's also lauded for modernizing the Assembly's four operations, as you saw. He's been recognized for appointing the first woman to the position of assistant chief clerk to the California State Assembly. Throughout his career of public service, he has touched the lives and mentored countless of elected officials and staffers from all walks of life and all cultural backgrounds. Dotson has dispensed procedural advice in a nonpartisan manner to nearly 500 Assembly members, and provided guidance to 12 speakers. Those close to him regard him as an institution, a living, breathing example that a commitment to hard work and excellence are the cornerstone of success. He is a reminder that when you follow your passion, work hard, and live your life with integrity, you will leave a mark on this earth. We have a few special guests here that want to share some anecdotes about what it's been like to working with Dotson, but let me just first acknowledge a number of our elected and former elected colleagues that are here to salute him today. Reggie Jones Sawyer, from the 59th Assembly District, my Assembly member. Former Assemblyman Jeff Gorrell, currently deputy mayor. Former Assemblyman Mike Davis, currently Public Works Commissioner. Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas, former Assemblyman, former state senator. Former Assemblywoman Gwen Moore. Former Assemblyman Richard Alletore. And Cynthia McLean-Hill, DWP Commissioner, who I understand went to law school with Dotson. Is she still here? At this time, I'm honored to present the current Speaker of the California State Assembly, the Honorable Anthony Rendon. In his three years in role as speaker, he's led some of the most progressive legislation sessions in memory. Among the Assembly's accomplishments under his leadership are restoration of funding for early childhood education, a landmark $52 billion transportation funding plan, and legislation to fight climate change and improve air quality for all Californians. Not to be confused with the shortstop of the Washington Nationals, Anthony Rendon, he also happens to be an avid Dodger fan. The Speaker and his wife, Anne Lamb, recently welcomed their first child, Vienna Lamb Rendon, to our lives. And so, colleagues, join me in welcoming the 70th Speaker of the California State Assembly, the Honorable Anthony Rendon.
Welcome, Mr. Speaker. Congratulations to you and Annie.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Good to be here. That other Anthony is rumored to be turning down a $210 million contract, which I would never do. So, as a point of distinction between us, it's great to be here, great to be at the Southern California branch of the California State Assembly Alumni Association. Great to see all of you again. And I want to thank all of you for honoring Dotson Wilson today. We in Sacramento have been honoring Dotson for about two months now. We call it Dotsonpalooza up in Sacramento. Huge, huge ceremony on the floor. As Councilmember Wesson knows, one of the great things about being speaker is your office is adjacent to the floor of the legislature, to the chambers. It allows you to kind of come and go a little bit, and when you have that vantage point, you realize how often members are late. So, I will often sort of go along the floor of the Assembly 30 minutes into session, and it'll be a half-empty, half-empty chamber. The day that we honored Dotson, everybody was there on time, and that says a lot about him, and that says a lot about what he means to our institution. I joked later that we should probably honor Dotson every Monday and every Thursday, just to make sure that members show up on time. But I think that sign of respect that members have for Dotson says a lot about him as a person, says a lot about him in terms of what he means to our institution, says a lot about what he's given to our body in terms of his fairness and his honesty. He is, in fact, so fair that not only was he first nominated by Speaker Willie Brown, but when the Republicans very briefly took over control of the legislature in 1996, I believe, he was reappointed by a Republican speaker, Kurt Pringle, which says a lot about the extent to which people recognize his fairness and his honesty, and the extent to which he's always willing to give everybody a fair shake. Every time there's a new freshman class, I give them one piece of advice. I say, "Don't talk to me. Go talk to Dotson." And every freshman, since I've been there, has spent a significant amount of time with Dotson. And that comes from my own experience as a freshman. I remember my freshman year, not only watching endless DVDs of the floor proceedings, and watching how Dotson ruled on different things, and the sort of flow, ebb and flow of the way the legislature occurs on a daily basis, but I remember sitting down with Dotson and talking to him, and asking him for positive, for feedback, for honest feedback. And my freshman year, I took on a gun bill, a very controversial gun bill, and you need 41 votes to get a bill off of the Assembly floor. I got 19. And I remember asking Dotson afterwards, I said, "I know it was a controversial bill," and I was a little beat up and down about it. I said, "I know it was a controversial bill, and it was maybe a bit of a reach, but do you have any advice for me?" And he said, "You should be better prepared next time." He said, "They asked you questions, and you didn't answer the questions crisply, and you didn't answer them quickly, and you didn't seem as though you knew the bill as well as you should." And I really regretted at that moment, asking him to be honest with me. Wasn't in the mood for it, but he gave me what I wanted. He gave me what I asked for. He gave me honest advice and honest critique, and that's who he is. His devotion is to the body, to the institution itself, and to making sure that our body runs effectively. That being said, I don't want to lose sight of who he is as a person. Whenever my dad is in Sacramento, he, my dad, and Dotson will geek out on UCLA Sports Trivia, trying to top each other. I remember another incident when my wife is from Sacramento, when we went to go have dinner, it was a family dinner at a sushi place that she likes. You remember this? And I dropped my wife off in front, because we were late as always. I dropped my wife off, and then I ran in to the restaurant, and I realized there weren't any empty seats at our table. And I was trying to figure out who took my seat, and Dotson was at the restaurant. He was at the sushi restaurant, and he sat down with my in-laws, and he was regaling them with stories about what happens in the Capitol. So, he's as personal, as great a person as he is in his day job. But I think whenever we think of people who are, to an extent, larger-than-life, it's important to think of them as individuals, to think of them as people, but not to forget what they mean symbolically. And I'm going to bring up my wife one more time, if I can. I think a lot of you know her, and know all the work that she does in Asian-American politics, and she's very conscious of Asian-Americans in the media. And every time there's a TV show or a movie that prominently features an Asian-American, she always takes our young nephew out to see the movie or the TV show. And he, like any other nine-year-old, is never interested. He's always looking somewhere else, trying to get on an iPhone and play Minecraft or something. But I remember one day, we were watching a television show, and he was staring at the television, and it was, on the television was a young Asian-American boy about his age, about nine years old. And we asked him, we said, "What are you looking at?" And he said, "That boy looks like me." And that was a moment when I realized how important that is. And for a body that has passed incredible legislation, whether it's regarding climate change, or decades ago regarding apartheid, groundbreaking legislation, to go into that chamber and to be a young African-American, to be a person of color, to look at the person at the center of it all, the person in charge, the person calling balls and strikes, and to say, "That person looks like me." That person in charge looks like me is as important as anything that you can possibly do, and it means more now than ever before. So, thank you, Dotson, for all that you've done for our institution, and thank you for what you've done for our state. what you've done for our state.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We also are honored to have former California State Senate Majority Leader, Richard Polanco, with us. Senator Polanco also served as a member of the California State Assembly for eight years and was known as the Godfather of Latino politics. As a leading voice in Latino politics, Senator Polanco was known for his dedication to increasing Latino representation in the California Legislature. In fact, Senator Polanco was the Chair of the Latino Caucus for more than a decade. Colleagues, please join me in welcoming another California trailblazer, the Honorable Richard
It's a real pleasure and a delight to be here this morning with each and every one of you. I'm honored to be here to acknowledge and pay tribute to a very, very special man. Dotson, you exemplify the true sense of what it is to be an honorable public servant in the truest sense of the word and the term. Your wisdom, your skills, your knowledge, and your unwavering commitment to fairness are deeply rooted in the history of California forever. Those who sit as members of the Council who served with Dotson will attest without any reservation to the honor that you placed and the integrity that you instituted in that great institution above party and partisanship. You go beyond being the first African-American to serve in this capacity as the clerk to the greatest institution on this planet. Yes, no other person has served as long as you. And as witnessed in the video, it's amazing that 4,000 Californians have had the opportunity to serve in this great institution called the California State Assembly. And those of us who have been able to serve among the 500, we admire, we respect, and have full admiration for your leadership. I remember the day that my seatmate, Jack O'Connell, was presiding, and I remember the announcement that Jack made. Motion carries. Congratulations, Wilson. Not only was history made that day, but it continued through your 27 years of service in that capacity. And like most of us in public policy, there comes times where we are challenged with very difficult choices. It was referenced that in 1994, in the midterms of the Republican sweep taking place throughout the country, the Assembly of the State of California was in a very difficult spot. The Republican Party winning one single majority in the lower house for the first time in a quarter, we were faced with a 40-40 tie. And ultimately, that parliamentary rule would dictate the outcome and the agenda and the public policies that will and would come forth. And I remember Dotson saying, and is quoted as saying, "I had a very difficult choice. I had to make a rule that anyone looking at it would have made the same." And the issue was whether or not Assemblyman Richard Mountjoy, at the height of this anti-immigration and at the height of this sweep that was occurring, refused or would be refused and would be rejected his credentials. And because of this man's integrity, the question was, would they really want me to make a rule kicking another member out of this body who has been duly elected by his No Republican voted for his nomination. But I'll close by giving you some quotes from those of the other side of the aisle, that in that challenging moment, said former Speaker Kurt Pringle, the Republicans who ultimately led the House in the aftermath of 1994 elections, in honoring Mr. Wilson on August 30th, quote, "What he did, we saw, the integrity and the commitment of the man." It was also stated by Assemblywoman Shirley Weber so eloquently and so well. She said, "Your name will take you places because of your integrity. You cannot buy it, you cannot market it. It's who you are, and your names speak volumes in the House and across the nation." Chairwoman of the Legislative Black Caucus, Dotson, it has been an honor working with you, an honor knowing you. Collectively, we are here today to salute you, to congratulate you, and to give thanks for the more than 40 years of public service and the difference that you have made in keeping the integrity of the greatest institution on this planet in place. Bless you, and it's my honor to call you my brother and friend.
Thank you, Senator Polanco. Next, we have another senator, no stranger to our chambers, the Honorable Stephen Bradford, representing the 35th Senatorial District. Senator Bradford is Vice Chair of the Legislative Black Caucus. He's also Chair of the very powerful Senate Banking and Fighting Institutions Committee and co-author of the landmark legislation that will permit college athletes to receive compensation, the Honorable Stephen Bradford.
Point of personal privilege, this is my senator, Senator Bradford. Thanks for your leadership, we love you.
Thank you.
Down in your district. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
For joining us in our chambers.
I will be brief. I'm honored to be here and represent the Legislative Black Caucus as the Vice Chair. We just want to bring our voices in unison. We have Assemblyman Mike Gibson, and we have Assemblyman Reggie Jones Sawyer, and just say thank you to Dotson Wilson. I had the honor and privilege of meeting Dotson some 30 years ago through a mutual friend, former staffer and a good friend, Darnell Cooley, and he says, "You need to meet Dotson Wilson." And that meeting led to a 30-year friendship that I can never repay. An individual who has treated me with nothing but respect and just embraced me from day one. And some 20 years later, when I was elected to the state legislature, I was elected in a special election, and I came in all by myself, and I didn't know up from down, didn't know anything, where to go, and one of the first individuals to grace my office and knock on my door was Dotson Wilson. And he gave me advice, asked how to conduct myself, not only as a legislator, but how to interact in the Capitol surrounding and throughout that community. But he also gave me some of the best advice as it comes to hiring staff, and four of my former staffers are direct recommendations from Dotson Wilson. It's often said, you don't want people talking behind your back, but you do want Dotson Wilson talking behind your back, because if he's talking behind your back, he's saying good things about you. He has never once uttered a negative comment about anyone in the 30 years that I've known him. If he's pulling you to the side and he's pointing somebody out, he says, "That's one of the smartest people in the room. This person's an expert on this issue right here. Go seek that person out." And that's the kind of advice and tutelage that Dotson has offered me and so many other legislators over the course of his 40-year career. He will not only be missed by the Assembly, but by the Senate as well, but more importantly, by California as a whole, because as stated, he's one of the individuals who comes with integrity. He exudes it in everything that he's ever done as a son, an employee, a father, a husband. And again, I'm just humbled and honored to call you a friend, and thank you for all the advice and the warm embrace that you've given me over the past 30 years. God bless you.
Thank you, Senator. And a public servant who needs no introduction, the 41st Mayor of the City of Los Angeles and the 63rd Speaker of the California State Legislature, Honorable Antonio Varegosa.
Thank you, Senator Polanco, for reminding us of a little history. I was there, and I remember that day. I think many of us, the Democrats on the floor, felt betrayed, felt like one of our own had done something to undermine who we are as a party, our agenda, the policies that emanate from that agenda. And remember, this was around the time of Proposition 187, just before 209. It was a different state back then, and there were many who said, "We will never work with him again." But over the years, I think we began to mature a bit, and we realized that excoriating the other side and calling them names doesn't get you where you want to go. We realized that the rules apply to everybody. When you're in the majority, when you're in the minority, if you're black or white, it applies to all of us. And that day, the courage to stand up, some of the naysayers said he stood up because he was fighting for his job. But looking back on that day, working with him as I did, both as Majority Whip, Majority Leader, and then Speaker of the California State Assembly, I can tell you this man personified integrity at every turn. I can tell you that he stood for the rules no matter what, that he gave Democrats and Republicans the same sage advice, and that in the end, our institution was better for Speaker Rendon, I think you'll agree, when you get elected Speaker, you see yourself as the leader of your party. But once you are the Speaker, you see yourself as the leader of an institution, not just the leader of your party. And as someone who had to lead that institution, I could tell you, I learned a valuable lesson. You got to stand up for what you believe in. You got to say no when everybody wants you to say yes, when it's necessary to blow against the wind, even if you're blowing all by yourself. Dotson Wilson earned my respect over the years, maybe not at the beginning, but certainly over the years. And I believe that in this time of partisanship and the polarization we see in the country, the dysfunction we see in Washington DC particularly, but in state capitals all around the nation, it is that kind of integrity. Those moments when someone has to stand up, even if they're standing alone, that remind us why we're here, what our duty is, what our calling should be. And so, Dotson, I wasn't able to make it in Sacramento the other day, but I did want to come today to acknowledge you, to thank you for standing up what you thought was right, for making that tough call. I think our institution was the better for it, and we owe that all to you, the First. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for those remarks. Speaking of Mayor, let's also acknowledge the Honorable Pullen Miles from Landale, the Mayor, Honorable Mayor. Before we hear from our guest of honor, let me invite one more elected friend and fan to speak, the Honorable Mike Gibson from the 64th Assembly District. He's Chair of the Assembly Democratic Caucus and a lifelong friend and advocate.
Yes, and my state Assembly Member, thank you, Mike, for representing us in Sacramento. We welcome you to our chambers, sir.
Thank you very much. To Council President and to Councilman President Wesson, Councilman Price, and Dotson Harris in his absence, to all my elected colleagues, I'm excited to be here to celebrate this great man. Let me regale you with one of my favorite quotes. "A good leader inspires people to have confidence in the leader. A great leader inspires people to have confidence in themselves." That was Dr. Martha King. And certainly, Dotson, you have inspired so many people. It is a great opportunity, one, to say a few words. I thank the City Council for, one, recognizing, making, proclaiming this day, Dotson Wilson's Day here in the City of Los Angeles. I just reflect it back on when I was elected in 2014 to the California State Assembly. What a remarkable day it was for me to walk on the green carpet. But two weeks after that, I thought Councilman Sadio would wear my red chucks on the floor with my full suit. And Councilman Corretts, I was met by Dotson, who quickly came to my desk, Councilman Weezer, and he admonished me. He admonished me, Councilman Farrell, to never wear red chucks. Those are all-stars for some of you who may not know what that means. He admonished me to never wear red chucks on the floor. That was not the fitting of an Assembly Member on the green carpet. He reverenced the institution that much to admonish the Assembly Member because the Assembly Member was inappropriate attire on that floor. He has certainly provided great leadership to our House, but also to the state of California, to rise and matriculate to this particular office, as my speaker said, so that other African-American young boys or people of color can see that if Dotson can do it, so can them as well. And so I am enthusiastically proud of the working relationship we've had since I've been elected to the California State Assembly. I honor this body for, one, honoring one of our own. I know the best is still yet to come, and I look forward to Dotson Wilson writing the new chapter in his life.
And ladies and gentlemen, now, a public--
Ladies and gentlemen, now, Mr. Price.
Yes.
I'm going to take over.
All right.
Just for a moment.
All right.
Now--
Yes, Mr. President.
First, what we're going to do as we are closing this out, everybody, get over there, stand with Curran, Dotson, Senator, Mayor, Mr. Speaker, Reggie, everybody. Let's give them a round of applause. These people-- They, Gwen, get over there. Okay, Mr. Spindler, Sergeant, show Mr. Spindler the door. He's been warned, all right, too many times, so Sergeant, he can be removed. No, Mr. Spindler has Sergeants. Sergeants, let's remove Mr. Spindler at this point. Remove him, he is not, we afford him his opportunity to speak. I am not going to let him destroy this moment. Mayor Pullen Miles, you can get up in here, too. Get up in here, too. Sergeants, let's show him a seat outside. All right, just give me one minute to get some order in this House, Mr. Dotson Wilson All right. Everybody that's here, why don't we just have a big round of applause? You know, Mr. Price, I want to thank you very much for bringing Dotson here today. I have a few members on the queue that want to speak, but I just want to say this, if I might. For people like the former mayor, myself, Bob Hertzberg, Cruz Bustamante-- I might. For people like the former Mayor, myself, Bob Hertzberg, Cruz Bustamante, individuals who were able to become Speaker of the House, it was at a time when you were in and out within two years. We could not have survived, and we're good at what we do, but we could not have survived without your counsel and your guidance. The, the worst thing in the world is that we were only there for such a short time. The best thing was we had you. And because of you, you made us look good. And I want you to know that personally, I appreciate it. And I'm sure I'm speaking for every Speaker that has ever served in the House when you were the, you were really the leader. And I know for me, never being elected before, getting there, you kind of guiding me, see, I'm sitting in this chair now is because of your work. You should give yourself a round of applause. All right? Because this, this is you, this isn't me. But anyway, with that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Corretts.
And this is a great opportunity for me to recognize you without having to fly to Sacramento, which I always hated doing, so I appreciate that. For members that didn't serve in the legislature, it's hard for me to describe your role as, as an advisor and someone that gave guidance to every member. Maybe it's like combining the advice of the CLA and the CAO and our city attorney and council all sort of rolled into one. But you were incredible in that role. You were a mentor to me and my staff. And at least during my six years in the Assembly, I think of that as the beginning of hyper-partisanship. I know right when I got there, the Republican Senate Leader Jim Brewerty had told all members of the Republican legislators in, in the House and the Assembly, they were going to be the obstructionists, and they had to stop a budget from ever going through. And they were told, if you voted against that, you would be out. And they needed four members of the State Assembly on the Republican side to vote, vote for the budget. And there were four courageous members, and sure enough, they were out. And that guaranteed a hyper-partisan period during the six years I was there. And honestly, without you there as the fairest and most honest and person of the highest integrity making the decisions and setting the rules, it would have been very difficult for, for our House to get through it for sure. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I think you, think of you as Dotson I. Wilson, because integrity is really your middle name. And you were known for that throughout every moment of your time in the legislature. I don't know if, if every person in that position took that same approach, because you're really the only person in my lifetime that really held that position and I was aware of for all those years. But you did quite an amazing job. You set a standard that I don't believe anyone else in that position will achieve, although I would hope they would strive for it. And thank you for everything that you did for the state and for the state legislature.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. Got some similar comments that we've heard. I mean, when I think of you, Dotson, I think of integrity, I think of knowledge, I think of wisdom, I think of someone who cares, and I think of someone who's a friend. And I so appreciate the work that you have done. And I think back, you know, we all have our, our times when sort of the critical Dotson moments. When I, when I started in the, in the legislature and I became Budget Chair, we were at a very difficult time. And we had, I had a lot of harebrained ideas of how we could get a vote to make, you know, to prevent us from going insolvent. And you helped navigate us through a number of those, and you also told me a number of those were out of bounds and, and I ought to go back and think of something else. And I appreciated that. And I've seen you wear 10 different hats. If you remember in, I think it was '09 or '10, that we had the regular session, you were Chief Clerk, and then we had nine special sessions where you had to be Chief Clerk as well. And it was a very trying time that we were trying to navigate this ship of California through financially. And you really helped make that happen. And so I'm just, I'm grateful to you and to all you've done for our state. And this state has no idea how much it owes you, because you really have been just rock solid for our state. And so I wanted to, to add my voice and thank you. So thank you.
Dotson, thank you for being a very dear friend. Now, it's difficult to follow so many great leaders. As they say, that saying about everything that's been said needs to be said, or hasn't been said, or everybody said it. You know what I'm talking about. Thank you. But it hasn't been said by me. So, anyway, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your kindness. From the first day, I also went on a special election. It's different. You show up, you're by yourself, you come into a body that's busy and active, and you don't have a clue about what's going on. And you were very kind to my family and to my wife. You were just a real gentleman and made us immediately, it made me feel immediately comfortable and welcomed and that I was at the right place. And so I thank you for that. We have a lot of things in common. Winston Dobie was one of our mentors. We're Bruins. We love sports. But I think the most important thing is you are a man of impeccable integrity. And you have taught me a lot. This commitment you have to the rules is really special, because we're all people who want the rules to apply to us and to apply to us equally. And so you've been there for three decades, leading the premier legislative body arguably of the world. The great thing about being in the legislature is you get to travel the world and you meet colleagues and contemporaries throughout the world. And they all look to California as the model of democracy. And so to have you stand here today, a person committed to the rules, the rule of law, the Constitution, is incredible because of what's taking place in Washington, where we have someone who's the extreme opposite. And we see that our democracy is really under attack. It's in peril. And so to have you here is, is really special and significant. You know, I want to say that there was a lot of talk today, conversations about this decision you made when you chose to follow the rules. I want to bring up another one, special for me, was when I was carrying this bill, Brownfields Cleanup Bill. Very important to California. We've got hundreds, thousands of brownfields throughout the state. We're in a housing crisis. We've got to find places to build, and we've got to clean the soil. And so we came up with something that was very novel at the time, a public-private partnership. We were going to have the private sector use its resources to clean the soil. Well, of course, this was not an idea championed by the Sierra Club or the Conservation League of Odors. And so Democrats were wary of it. I took that bill from the Senate to the Assembly, and we went to the committee chaired by Judy Chu, and we made our presentation. And then I got a second and a motion on my bill, and I asked for a vote. And the Chair didn't want to hear it. The Dems didn't want to vote for it, up or down. And you had already taught me something that you reminded me of today, that's important to all of us, that we, the electeds, are the only ones who have the privilege of voting. But not just the privilege of voting, we have the responsibility of voting. We have the duty and obligation of voting, as you would say, for our constituents, reflecting the values of those who have sent us to this body and to other bodies where we are honored to serve. And you taught me that day that that was the rule of law. And you came and, and there was a controversy, they stopped the hearing. And they wanted to move the bill and hold it in committee. And you said, "No." You came to the committee, you brought your book, you looked it up, and you said, "He's right. He has a right to have a vote, even if it's up or down, whatever the case may be. We had a right to vote. Everybody had that duty. Everybody had that obligation." And you made that happen. I can't thank you enough for that. We're a better state for that. Our environment is cleaner and better for that. You've been a real champion for the essence of what democracy is and the rule of law. And for that, this state is indebted to you. And I thank you both for your friendship, but also for your leadership. God bless.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wilson, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank you for your example. You know, to hear all the stories that have been shared about you, what your contributions have been to the history of California is very important in this very important time in our country's history. You know, I think about what my friend Speaker Rendon was talking about, how important it is to have individuals that are in their likeness, that people can look up to. I want to thank you for being that incredible example of someone that we can all look up to and aspire to be more like. In following the rules, in serving as honorably as you have, we thank you for your service to California, to the important role that you played, but more importantly, for being the greatest and best example for all of us to admire and enjoy. I'm, I'm proud to be part of a body that today is honoring you with the highest distinction we can possibly give anyone in the city of Los Angeles in declaring a day in your honor. Thank you for your service.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present to you the man who's been the glue that has held the California State Assembly together since the 90s. Ladies and gentlemen, our friend Dotson Wilson. Dotson, the floor is yours.
I'm truly honored. And I wouldn't be standing here in Los Angeles in the City Council Chamber if it wasn't for Council President Wesson. Now, he'll always be Speaker Wesson to me during the two years that he served. And when he served, you have to keep in mind that we were averaging 32 new members every two years under term limits, anywhere from five to six members elected in special elections. And when Mr. Wesson assumed the role as a Speaker, he changed the culture in many ways. You know, he talked about, "It's all about we." But more importantly, he set an atmosphere where staff became more respectful of other staff. And the theme that I operate off of is that you always treat someone the way you'd want to be treated when you first meet them, not because they have power, not because they have influence. So one of the reasons I'm still in the California Assembly and have a great relationship with high-ranking staff is many of them reminded me 20 years ago when I first met you, you always treated me with respect. Now, there was some reference to the diversity in our office. If you ever watch an Assembly floor session, and I'm now retired, you will see staff that meet the following criteria. First LGBTQ manager ever to work at the Assembly Desk. First woman to ever serve as the Deputy Chief Clerk. First bilingual reading clerk ever, back when Fabian Nunez was, was Speaker. I can go on and on, because a commitment to diversity doesn't mean that you're not high, you're not holding people to the highest standard. I demand excellence as a manager, and diversity means nothing more than equality of opportunities. So thank you, Council President Wesson. Now, my wife couldn't be here. She said she was still recovering from the ceremonies that Speaker Rendon organized up in Sacramento back on August 29th, but in all seriousness, she had a prior commitment. And even if you don't follow sports, I have to, to recognize just quickly, my UCLA track teammates who, who came out, including one of our USC Trojan athletes dating back to the 1970s. And one of our mentors was someone who went on to become Carl Lewis's collegiate coach and coached him through the 1984 Olympics. So I appreciate my, my friends of 40-plus years from UCLA, you know, coming out. A lot of them said, "We didn't know what you did until you decided to retire, but congratulations." I'm going to cover some quick points, and I'm going to keep it short, Council President Wesson. There were some references to the 1994 rulings, and did I make those rulings looking to the future? I quite frankly, didn't expect to have my job after I made those rulings. But I had an uncle who died about 10 years ago. He practiced medicine in West Oakland for 50 years. And he said to me, "You can always get a job, but you have to protect your reputation and your integrity." That's the bottom line. So I'm honored that I was able to serve as Chief Clerk for 27 years, but if it had been 27 months, that would have been fine, too. So let me also acknowledge the Honorable Kern Price, who helped spearhead today's recognition. I didn't know he knew that much about me, but I, I appreciate all the remarks that he made. And part of it is tied to Curtis Ernest, who we've known each other for 40 years, and he's the Chief of Staff to, to Mr. Price. And I really appreciate all the things that, that, that he's done over the years. One point of clarification, Mr. Gibson, what I said was you couldn't wear red chucks with your suit, but I didn't say you couldn't wear black chucks. And just so you'll know, I always address members by their title. And words like "advice" is what I kind of focus on. I think about the six members of, of the City Council who've had the pleasure of working with here in the, when they were in the legislature. Council Member Corretts, Council Member Sadio, we had the opportunity of, of, of working together. Obviously, Council Member Wesson, Council Member Price, it was a true honor, and Council, Council Member Bloomingfield. We have a longstanding, standing relationship, and I appreciate that relationship. I just want to cover a couple of other quick points. I know the Council Member Harris-Dawson was involved in, in this celebration as well. And then, I was surprised. Some of the staff in Sacramento said, "We're going to make you cry at some point." And they almost got me there today when I saw Speaker Rendon coming off remarks. I did not expect him to be here. He paid tribute to me and my family in Sacramento in a way that is unprecedented, along with the members of the, of the Legislative Black Caucus. And I also want to thank Speaker Viero Rodriguez. He gave you a pretty good overview of, of how things worked in Sacramento. Appreciate him taking the time to come out. Senator Richard Polanco, who previously served in the, in the Assembly. And Senator Polanco, we had one thing in common, a commitment to make sure that the staff in the legislature reflected the diversity, diversity of the state. Also, I want to thank, who also offered remarks, Senator, Senator Bradford, as well as Caucus Chair Mike Gibson. I just want to say that all this, this recognition is something I really appreciate. But whoever takes my place in Sacramento, hopefully they will carry on the tradition of the Chief Clerk's office to make sure that the office represents the best that California has to offer. Assembly Member Moore remembers me when I was a, she said I was an intern, and Assembly Fellows were pretty much interns that got paid. So we have a, we have a long, long history, history as well. And I didn't quite know what to expect when I came down here today. And for the LA City Council, under the leadership of Council President Wesson, to designate a day in my honor is something that I truly appreciate. Next year, my family will have been in California. My father's family moved from Shreveport, along with Claude Hudson's family, to California. They will have been here for over 100 years. And who would have dreamed that someone that looks like me would be serving as the Chief Clerk and Parliamentarian of the California Assembly? Clerk and Parliamentarian of the California Assembly? But I, by working with the 500 members, 13 speakers, we've really paved the way to make sure that whoever sits in this chamber, or sits in any other chamber, will be afforded equality of opportunity. California sets the trend. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Curtis Ernest and I, we go back and forth and joking about, "I'd be your brother, you're my brother." And I was going through the number of people that we have reached out and mentored over the last 40 years, and I stopped counting at 100 people. Because it's just not about doing your job. What is your legacy going to be? I don't care how much money you get paid, I don't know how many responsibilities you have, what will be your legacy when it's all over? And if you didn't reach back and help someone that's not related to you, then why are you there? And I just want to close by saying, I'm honored to be here. Thank you, Council President Wesson. I consider it an honor to be here in the LA City Council, and I consider it a true honor. Thank you very much. We honor you today for your commitment, for your dedication, for your professionalism, for your friendship. We honor you. Thank you. This is your day.
Mr. Price, why don't we recess for two minutes? And everybody, let's do a group shot. So before our Assembly people leave, and the mayor, let's do a group shot. So we'll go into recess for two minutes. City photographers, be on alert.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also want to invite everyone to join us in the forecourt with some soul food and some Mexican food to get through the afternoon.
Okay, let's go back in the session. Members, take your seats. Members, take your seats. Mr. Buscayino? Okay, we are back, back in session.
Okay, let us come to order. We're now in session. Have you heard from Mr. Wesson? Madam Clerk, let's take multiple comment cards and bring up Cory Schmidt. Is Cory in the audience? Cory, please come forward. We are back in session, please. Quietly make your way if you need to head out. Cory, you're given three minutes on all the cards that you pulled, and then one minute general public comment. Now, let me remind you to speak on the items that you pulled. Thank you.
Three minutes, one minute, I like it. Okay, so, good presentation, I liked it. Honorable dude. Speaking on integrity, I'm very much for that. So in regards to number 55, we've got a project on... so let's talk about what is going on. So we have a project on Cherokee, so let's talk about Indian burns. I see that again and again and again, we got this street lighting shit on the agenda. And I said, "I don't want to see it on there," because I am not against fixing the streetlights. It's not about the streetlights. I'm talking about, we're putting microwaves on the streetlights. And I'm talking about it because I'm seeing ads now from Sprint. You know, the companies are starting to put it out there that they're getting ready to roll this shit out. And I'm tired of getting cooked, so I think that we should stop this shit. You know, we're talking about Victory Boulevard being closed again temporarily. It's been like a year now. But that's where the fires were at. So it's like, you know, why don't we bring up the firefighters? They're here, let's ask them what they think about the whole situation. You know, might give someone a sudden cardiac arrest, but you know, I think that we should be compensating the victims of the disaster that's happened. You know, we're trying to preserve, you know, 56th and Orange Street, and I'm just like, you know, we need to get a grip on shit. Okay, so again, well, Krikorian's not here. We're talking about increasing the appropriations limit, but then I'm looking further down the list, and we are increasing vacation time and outside council. But I kind of agree, because you're going to need that fucking shit, because I'm going to be distributing tickets. Like, it's fucking, I'm going to make that shit rain like it's Magic City. Like, so, you know, talking about the Taylor Yard in the Santa Monica Mountains, about G2, well, I'm G2, motherfucker. So, you know, going to widen a road? I'll widen your fucking road, just like I'm about to with Saroyan Square and her husband, you know, up the street. So let that water from the viaduct come down. You know, so let's talk about the linkage fee plan. You know, the whole thing is that we're building up these developers, giving them incentives and stuff, and if they come back and give us a fee, this linkage fee, then we can use, you know, so they don't create open space, they don't create anything but building and canyons and concrete, then we're supposed to take this fee and go spend it somewhere else. But I see that there's a plan for using this, and it's $120,000 for Hims.
Okay, give him his one minute, general public comment. Thank you.
And it looks like Hims, you know, are we taking boner pills here, or maybe we're taking Bonin's pill here? You know, because I see that we're also increasing transportation projects to plow through our neighborhoods, pretty much that's what those are going. So no RVs, permit parking, and these nuisance projects that are going to have liens all over them. So, you know, talking about the sewer easement in Crenshaw, you know, what is this shit? So, you know, middle-class rent burden, affordable housing, the affordable housing's done by LLCs and corporations. You know, I mean, we should be doing it ourselves. We should be making affordable housing. But it doesn't matter, because I'm about to remove some properties, just like you guys are, through the rent escrow thing, so that's fine. I think Harris Dawson, if he was here, he would agree a little bit on funding for more community services, like he's starting to pick up on. Thank you.
Okay, for those joining us for the first time here in Council chambers, just bear with the general public comment, you may, you're going to hear some unpleasant comments, but that's First Amendment right, so please bear with us. With that, members, let's take item number 55. 55 is now before us. Let us open the roll on 55, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Back to public comment, let's bring in Eric Previn. Eric, you have multiple comments. Is he here? Last call for Eric Previn. Three minutes on all the cards that you pulled, and we'll give you the additional minute for general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn. And I was just trying to look at, yeah, it is the one that Dana Sales of 360, your buddy's over at England or Kenaby &amp; Allen, that's the one you just shoved through. So good job on that.
Okay, hold his time, please. Hold his time.
55.
Eric, you need to speak on the items that you pulled. We already voted on 55, okay? That's your last warning.
Yeah, you're not warning me. I'm talking on the items, sir. There's plenty of items to talk about. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, start his time.
Yeah, you got a bunch of liens on property. Certainly, it's over $30,000. I did a quick tally. And I note that you've got that Measure M item, Measure M funding, where last week you tried to fake out the whole city by pouring local return money for transportation into Monica Rodriguez's attempt to fence off her district to the support of the Public Safety Group that will then grease her up for the next election, or whoever needs to be greased up. So I appreciate that you tried to do it, you weren't successful, it's unfortunate. Bonin has got several lockdown on the transportation, parking availability for members of the public items, as it ranges across several districts, Item 8, where Mr. Harris Dawson not here today. Obviously, it's a little disturbing, because you had a 90-minute presentation at the public expense, and yet he paid for it, wasn't even here. So that's awful, awful. Then you've got item numbers, rather, District 7 has some of those. And your district, sir, you're the king of locking up public space for parking and making it private. So good job in your district, and then obviously Bonin, the king of it. So that's what's happening as we pretend that it's a great... and by the way, it's Yom Kippur, so shameful to see Paul Coretts up here dancing and singing like a little imbecile, when in fact, the public have real meeting agenda items that you're completely ignoring, which include, by the way, an enormous rollout of MOUs with the Fire Department. And, you know, what can I say? Unions deserve some respect, but to do it like this, where nobody's around, where it's a special meeting followed by nine push-throughs of an extension of the vacation period from two to three weeks per miss, it's just, you know, it does not look good on the high holy days. But then again, you're not trying to look good. You're trying to gather kind of an inside feeling of all your folks. And, you know, I wouldn't say that it's going that great, but I would say that it is moving forward. There are also on this agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got, as I said, the liens on the property are significant. There's a significant... and Measure H, I mean, HHH, Prop HHH. You've got, Krikorian is trying to do a navigation center. There's a little list of five things. Yours is the one that's bolded, sir, the more four and a half million dollars for something in your district. But these are HHH projects. Now, nobody ever expected six-plus million dollars for a navigation center. Now, when we go out to Sherman Way and look at that navigation center, we fully anticipate to see some kind of a temporary trailer, and yet all the money will be spent. And this is exactly the MO of Council members in our district. They're trying to migrate these funds that the public has set aside for actually helping people to nether parts of the district where, who the hell knows what's actually going to happen out there? And yet, the facilities are completely ordinary, mundane. I mean, for the record, you can't even get a drinking fountain in this building. And now I'll take my one minute of general public comment.
Okay, give him his one minute, thank you.
And I just want to say how pleased I was to see E. Dotson Wilson, the great rule biter in our midst. I'm curious what he thinks about Rule 93. He can look at the City Council rules. It's a rule that says that all individuals should be shown in the same size and format, yet Councilmember Wesson, his hero, for a very long time, has been reducing individuals who speak at this very podium, not to the size of Mayor Viero Rosso, but to the size of hashtag Blumenfield's nose. Why they do that, we don't know, other than it's incredibly, you know, kind of diminishing of the people who come down here as volunteers to participate in our local government. So it's a very, very sad state of affairs, frankly. Now, the other rule that we're bent have to do with the rules about who can serve as... you can't serve as a lobbyist once you've been a Council member, but that's exactly what Greg Smith did. And then Herb Wesson shoved through a special election for John Lee and the folks out in CD-12 that is now being viewed as a conspiracy among certain people, including Holly Walcott.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And we're going to follow up on that, sir. Good luck. Have a great day.
Arnold Sachs, Arnold Sachs, rather, please come forward. Arnold Sachs, is he in the building? He's followed by an individual who actually gave the phone number on to the public comment kiosk, last four digits ending in 7032. Arnold, three minutes on all the cards that you pulled, and then one minute general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Arnold Sachs, and what a blessing to come here today and listen to this free program. I held Item 64 about liens. I held Items F A R T. I was wondering, do you tell the people who have the liens about the process with hakla, about the hearings that they can go through to discuss the liens? I'm still also wondering... I'm still also wondering why there's no city funding available to these people for rehabilitating their homes. I understand the state wants to start a bank to lend money to people. Why doesn't the city use bonds? I mean, uh, Mikla bonds, so that the people can, uh, or even lease revenue bonds, so the people can make repairs and pay the bonds back with the leases that they get from the tenants? When is the city gonna start to invest in the middle class, go a long way towards making a more livable city? But I held that first, and then I held Item Number 6. It's the, uh, uh, $6,234 million in appropriations. Then I held Item Number 63, which regards city ethics. There's an oxymoron. Moron, moron, and oxy. And then I held Items Number 11, 13, and 15. They were lighting district hearings. And what's fascinating about those districts' hearings is, it's actually nobody here to complain about them, but they were all held in Public Works at the same day, and there was nobody here for those hearings. But what was fascinating about those hearings was that they took people from the house, the lighting district they were in, and created special districts for Metro's Expo Line to light the stations. So essentially, people aren't paying for streetlights, they're paying to light the light rail line stations in South LA. Pretty devious, but, you know, it's open and transparent, so who gives a rat's ass? And then, um, I don't know, uh... Back to this appropriations money. $6 billion worth of money, and, and does any of that include any of the marijuana sales tax? I noticed Supervisor Ridley Thomas was in here. Thankfully, he left. But he was the, uh, founder of the MRT tax for the excise tax. I also noticed his son was here. Unfortunately, they were sitting on different sides of the room. There's a real love being.
Stick to the items, please.
Well, uh, it's part of the appropriations, because I was wondering if any of the, uh, excise tax that's supposed to be collected by the city council members, marijuana dispensaries, is being used as part of this appropriations? Thank you. My time's up there.
Give him his one minute, please.
So, in this hearing, I, in this presentation, I heard about effective operations, running effective operations, and effective operations where you serve the constituents that don't pander to the elected officials. I didn't hear too much about that. I also heard about a leader of an institution. Nurse Ratchit was a leader of an institution. I heard about this function everywhere but in LA. Everywhere else but LA. I had, I heard, um, Mr. Gibson say something about red chucks, and he was admonished about the wearing the red truck. Probably wearing red chucks because they class with blue suede. And then I saw some ads in the news, in the hallways about health coverage for the employees, and I'm thinking, "That never occurred before in all the hearings here." But more importantly about that, there's no trademark registration for any of those organizations. So are they legitimate, or are they like LA Cares? I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Is there an individual that put his phone, her phone number ending in 7032? Please come forward. Okay, Mike Greenspan, come on up. Three minutes of all the cards that you pulled, and one minute of general public comment.
Thank you. Mike Greenspan, Bruin butt-kicking Florida Gator. We're 6-0 UCLA. I don't. Do we see the money? No, we don't either. It goes down the drain. Now, uh, just thought I'd remind everybody with all those Bruin fans, now let's talk about the lights. After all, I'm sorry Mr. Krikorian's not here today, because we had a problem, and it's only been partially fixed on Lancashire, between Boz and Sherman Way. There's only six streetlights out now, so it's not completely dark. One of them is on the east side of Lancashire, just adjacent to and south of the railroad track overpass. The other five are Sherman Way and Lancashire on the west side, and then two, the two streetlights north of the railroad tracks on the west side of Lancashire, and then we've got the railroad track overpass, and then the two south of the railroad track. So we're doing a great job on those streetlights. What's the old saying? Good enough for government work. They only, I've mentioned it about three times, and some of the lights have been restored, but not all of them. Now, John Walsh, rest in peace, lit a fire under me years ago. He was talking about the rental, the rent escrow account fund, REIT, or rent escrow account program. And I'm walking out after the city council meeting to our parking lot, and they're building something. And I asked the builders, "What are you building?" "Oh, we're, we're building an exercise room." And I called 311, because when you call 311 and give them the address, they'll tell you if there's a permit or not. And lo and behold, there was no permit. I mean, even the Ku Klux Klan gets a permit to have a rally. How come the builders don't get a permit to build, to build a capital improvement in a, in a 99-unit apartment building? I even called up one on, in Paul Coretts's district, in the 6400 block of Orange Street. A person would call me on the phone, two doors down, and I'm hearing a jackhammer going off at 7:30 in the morning. And the, the duplex had no building permit. Gee, we could really get lots of money if we just go through Paul Coretts's district and, and find everybody who doesn't have a building permit, and they can all afford it. So, just wanted to bring that up to you. By the way, if you have a choice about streetlights, get the streetlights put on a wooden post. They could change it in one day. You call up DWP. If you get those metal ones, you'll have like the problems we've got, and they're only partially done. Now, um, oh, and low-IQ Maxine Waters. Okay.
Okay, give him his one minute. Thank you.
Yes. Mike Greenspan, a Bruin butt-kicking Florida Gator. We're 6-0 UCLA. I don't. Now, Mr. Herman mentioned an issue a while back in the LA Times about charter schools. The principals get $300,000 a year, and the union goons from the teachers' union think that's fine. Now, I know Nury and Ms. Weezer were on the school board. Of course, maybe in those days, those principals got, oh, $200,000, $250,000 at most, now they get $300,000. Well, what could we do with the $300,000? Well, that money equals four Mitch Englander payouts for sexual harassment at $75,000 each, when John Lee was the chief deputy. Filthy Kiggrich gets a five-figure welfare check. Well, no welfare for the rich and Jewish. Our city attorney gets $185,000, and she's in the bar, but the principals aren't in the bar? We're really overpaying those suckers, and your Bruins suck.
Okay, let's bring up Herman. Herman, come on. Three, uh, three minutes of all the cards that you pulled, and then one minute of general public comment. Be sure you stick, stick to the items.
Harry protests on appeals of objection. Building and safety. Misses a baby cuss for noncompliance. Yeah, look at Item I, 1109 East Anaheim. Street Anaheim Colas, Street AKA 1107, East Anaheim Street. Now, you gotta lien for $2,653.56. Regarding, regarding the protest and appeals for a public lien nuisance. But you heard the public outcry on public nuisance. It's a fucking joker. Look at, look at, look at Item D for Deck, CD 10 Deck, 2033 West 31st Street, nigga. $2,591. And 18 cents. Now, let me go to another item, 'cause I don't want to get struck on these fucking streetlights. Take, for example, this shit regarding Housing Authority, LASSA. Well, you know what LASSA stands for? Corruption, Abuse, and Waste of Federal Dollars. And we remain the notorious state capital of corruption based on Kerry Morrison LA Times Oversight Committee. So why is it at 8 in Navigation Center for $8,984,260,000? Oh, I got that fuck shit messed up. That's $8 million, nigga. Andrew G. Hill, LA HSA 2132258456. There's something fucking wrong with HHH facilities. There's something notoriously wrong with HHH facilities, and you all know what it is. You know what it all is? Corruption. Killing people over housing. There's something wrong with the fucking gap to address funding and city-sponsored programs, HHH, bitch.
Give him one minute.
So, you see, the Joker's back. And the Joker knows, bitches. 055529, Bagdad Zering versus United States is not a criminal threat. And when you raise restraining orders against the public to slap us, to restrain us from attending public meetings and participation programs and services, that means you're discriminating on a disability, you stupid fucking cop. And for that reason, I get to go to the Stanley Moss Courts to fight another restraining order, 'cause you niggas are retaliating the way you kicked out Wayne Spiller this morning, simply for pointing out Herb Wesson is a fuck-up. Herb Wesson-Jason is a motherfucker, fuck-up, and the fool got upset. FBI, investigate these putos.
There's no need to, no need to scream in the mic, Herman. No need to scream in the mic. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk? I think we have a number of items to be voted on. Let's begin. Let's do Items 3 through 19. Let us open the roll on Items 3 through 19. Nope, standby. Voting Clerk, waiting for you. No pressure. Are we good? Okay. Let's open the roll on Items 3, 3 through 19, or let's close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Let's now take Items 24 through 30. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Let's now take Item Number 62. 62 is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
62 is approved. 68 and 69 is now before us. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Items are approved. And now, let's take the two, um, closed session items 71 and 72. I believe, um, Clerk's gotta read those into the record. I'm sorry? Okay, I believe, I believe we have a speaker on 70, so we'll hold that on the desk still. Let's see the closed session items, 71 and 72, if you can read those into the record.
Yes. Item 71, in the case entitled.
Hold on, hold on. You're, you're, Mr. Previn, you are disrupting the meeting, okay? You're disrupting the meeting. That's your last warning. Read Items 71 to 72, please, into the record.
Item number 71, in the case entitled Violet Ramirez et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expand up to 160,000 in settlement. Item 72, in the case entitled Larissa Watson versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to 400,000 in settlement.
Very good. So Items 71 and 72, members are now before us. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. We have, um, multiple comment cards. Rob Kwan, is Rob Kwan here? Okay, you filled, uh, two cards, two items, so you'll have, you'll be given two minutes. 63 and 66, and then you'll be given one minute of general public comment.
Mr. President, for the record, the amending motions for 66 as well as 67 has been circulated, posted, and is now before council.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kwan?
Thank you. Uh, for Item 66, the Climate Emergency Mobilization Department, a lot of credit goes to Councilmember Coretts for his leadership on this. But I do hope this council takes the appointment process for this commission seriously. I think back to when this council was choosing a petroleum administrator, and, uh, just as we see with our president, foxes guarding the hen house. The petroleum administrator chosen by this council previously worked for Chevron, previously ran for school board, and while he was serving as, um, petroleum administrator, he actually ran once again last year for Long Beach Local Office, where there's no contribution limit. He took $15,000 from the Pipe Fitters Union, which opposes, uh, a proposal to ban urban oil drilling. Now, Udo Walk's wife is running for Long Beach City Council, and earlier this year posted the biggest fundraising haul on record in the city of Long Beach. That's really not the kind of person we want objectively looking at urban oil drilling. I think in the report, that shows there was a real neglect of any actual health impacts. Turning to Item 63 in the ticket policy, it was good that we had Mayor Viergosse here today. About eight years ago, he was fined $123,000 for 30 events, sporting events, musical events, that he didn't report. Despite all that, apparently this council didn't take note of that. We saw in the LA Times last year that three, only three out of our 10 council members that took tickets to Hamilton actually reported them properly and on time. Councilmember Coretts, Rue, and Councilmember Monica Rodriguez. The rest of the council members didn't. This is something where red flags should have gone up. Person had, is a restricted source with multiple issues they were lobbying on. Back in, uh, after the recession, this council slashed.
Just give him his one minute, please, general public comment.
Ethics Commission staff. We used to have two staffers there, and then it went down to zero, and it's been that way since, up until this year. We just ask you to follow the laws that you're passing. For my general public comment, once again, I'm gonna turn to corporate money and its control of this council. Couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that I wanted to look at an overview of what our council members are taking and campaign contributions, and I've previously mentioned 80% of contributions in the city of LA come from human beings. And guess what? Our council average is only 70%. And if you look at our council, only one member actually meets the average for the city, and for our council members, 30, 53% of their money in their office holder accounts comes from individuals. I've got reports for all of you. I'm gonna take some time to make sure I fix it up to look pretty, but, uh, let's turn off the conduit for political money laundering. There's some common sense solutions here, like New York has. Thank you.
Sir, Dr. Millo, please come forward. Millo Desri? Please come forward. You'll be given one minute on Item Number 2 that you pulled. Desire?
Hi, greetings. Um, I had other agenda items, so is that after, or is it just public comment right now? Just public comment?
You signed up for 64 and 70? And general public comment. You'll be given two minutes. My bad. Two minutes on the two items.
No problem. All right, so, part of the, uh, agenda was gentrification. That's what we were talking about with Public Works and, uh, Gang Task Force Unit. It has to be transparent exactly what their plans are, particularly in SPA 6, South LA. Everyone is outside, you know, honoring E. Dotson, so the main players of incompetence are not here. So unfortunately, um, we need to. So unfortunately, we need to have more power to the people. And even though I know what I'm saying here is not going to matter, we're going to claim some stakes on empty lots in South L.A. And we request that the city and the county of Los Angeles come with paperwork as far as what they're planning on doing with these lots, especially Manchester, Vermont. It's been sitting there. You snatched it from Eli Sassooni. And right now, it looks like a flea market. You got people hanging clothes on the fence, selling stuff. You got tacos on the corner, but not one goddamn hammer and nail for this supposed resource center that's supposed to be built there. And you guys, Garcetti, spent $2.5 billion on this opening July 2017 concerning this lot. So what are you guys doing? For an hour, you honored Dotson. That's great. Him being the first African-American clerk. Whoop-de-doo. Whoop-de-doo! What accomplishment is that? What has he done in the last forty years other than following the rules? Which is what you guys are doing. We need some change. We need some housing. I need to find out who paid Marquis $200,000 for the lot on Vermont and 115th. We have homeless being incriminalized right now, thanks to you. So...
Okay, give her one minute of general public comment.
Wounding it up. So it's power to the people. And as I mentioned before, we are not sitting down and turning in proposal after proposal as we have. Particularly in South L.A., West Athens, CD Eight, CD Nine, CD Ten, and Marquis and Margaret Lee Thomas, between the four of them, they're just as useful as aluminum foil toilet paper. It really doesn't make sense for why people like... But then again, it does make sense. You got Pelosi, and you got Gavin Newsom, and you got all of the Getty gang that are sitting there talking about impeach him on evidence that's not even there. So if we can't have a House of Representatives, which is federal, to make sense, how do we expect the county to make sense? How do we expect the state of California to make sense? How do we even respect the city to make sense? So we ask you to repeat, to respect the proposals we're submitting, and do your fucking job.
Thank you. Is there a... Is there a Donna in the audience? Donna? Yes. Donna, you pulled item number two. You'll be given one minute on item number two. And then you'll be given one minute on general public comment.
On number one. I redid...
You signed up for two. Go ahead, speak. Give me your minute.
Could you look it up to see I put in also 1A? 1A, I was on my desk.
Go ahead, that's fine. Speak on 1A.
Okay. I'm going to speak on number one because I see we got $30,000 worth of liens. I put in two, and then I put in one afterwards. So we got two thousand, over $2,000 worth of liens. It's a problem. Oh, this is great! Great revenue to have for all these liens! The one way to bring in money to the Los Angeles is by bringing liens in so that we can get it on the backs of small people. I think that sounds a great idea to bring all those liens on and to bring in money for the councils that we can waste billions of dollars somewhere else. But who cares about those billions of dollars and about the metro? Who cares about that? As long as we have the liens.
Okay, Donna, do you want to speak on the public comment? Public comment, okay, very good.
Okay, this is where I really came for. We got a problem, Blumenthal, because you brought, you allowed the permit for the people who are anti-chicken prominence, of these people that look like they're Jews, but they're not. They're Muslims. And they're bringing out the time for Yan Kippur. This is Yan Kippur, and they're talking about a process, the thing that's not even been done anymore, swinging chickens over the heads. It's not even been done anymore. And all it's going to do is bring out anti-Jewish sentiment right near Yan Kippur. Great job, Blumenthal! Great job, Coretts. You shouldn't be allowing this. We have to stop those people. They can't be talking about an equated thing of the swinging chickens over the heads, which is not a good idea, but they're not even doing it anymore. There's a small amount, and in the meantime, they're bringing anti-Jewish remarks. Stop the event!
Okay, your time's up. Is there a... Okay, stop disrupting the meeting, Donna, otherwise you'll be asked to move. Okay, is there a Milene Carberry? Milene, you pulled item number sixty-three. You'll be given one minute to speak on sixty-three and one minute of general public comment. She'll be followed by David Burke.
Milene Carberry, Unregala, item sixty-three. It feels like we are putting our fingers in continuous holes in a dam of corporate greed. You're supposed to be our buffer, our protectors, our last line of defense for vulnerable communities. Yet we constantly see cracks in this thin veneer of service. Why must we be here to ask you to ban excessive gifts, tickets, as a way of influencing your moral behavior? Why is it not yourselves that are saying, "No way"? Your ears are filled with corporate lobbyists daily, but can you hear the schools with no books or desks or that look like prep schools for prisons? Can you hear the mother on the street with her children because she got sick and could no longer work? Can you hear the displaced families in Boyle Heights that are being evicted as we speak? Or do the tickets, the gifts, the LLCs get your attention every time? We should not have to police you. You should be policing corporate greed trying to steal from us.
Give her one minute of general public comment.
Though I am here for Unregala, I am the Director of Communications for the California Poor People's Campaign, whose mission is to bring the conversation of poverty to the forefront. The levels of people living at or below poverty level is increasing every day. Yet when I come here, we are continually asking for ways to keep the mega-rich from influencing your vote. Your ethics, our future. We must ban corporate contributions. When outside these doors, I see poverty in the streets that run between billion-dollar buildings. But when I'm here, I see expensive suits, well-groomed council members, most likely homeowners, who we have to convince to keep corporations from distorting your perception of who you serve. The first voice you should hear in the morning and the last voice you should hear before you go to sleep is the voice of the people. We must ban corporate contributions, non-individual contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a David Burke? You pulled item number sixty-three, sir. Thanks for your patience, and you'll be given one minute on sixty-three and one minute on general public comment.
Thank you. Hi, I'm David Burke. I represent a nonprofit called Citizens Take Action that's based here in Los Angeles. Regarding item sixty-three, I simply want to encourage city officials as much as possible to comport with and follow the policies regarding tickets to entertainment events, sporting events. As Rob Kwan mentioned, there have been large fines in the past related to tickets being received by city officials and not being properly disclosed. As a founder of a nonprofit, I understand that requirements, reporting requirements, disclosure requirements are cumbersome and time-consuming. But it's important to follow them in order to have transparency necessary for voters to know who is influencing their elected officials. And to that end, if we add an additional education position to the ethics budget, it will help both the council and voters comply and understand those requirements.
Okay, you want your one minute of general public comment?
I also want to speak strongly in favor of the city finally moving forward in favor of a ban on contributions from corporations and LLCs. It's been so clear for years. Six years ago, Los Angeles residents passed Proposition C, expressing their opposition to Citizens United and corporate influence in politics. And Los Angeles, I always say this every time I'm here, should be a leader in campaign finance reform. But not only are we behind cities like San Francisco and New York, which have successfully enacted contribution bans for corporations and LLCs, but this has been federal law for years. We are behind the law of the land on this. And with limited time left to put a charter amendment question on the ballot, we need to act swiftly, take action, and limit the influence of corporations and LLCs which shield the true identity of contributors in political campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Mr. Washington here? Mr. Washington? Please come forward. Is there a big homie Washington here? Okay, do you want your general public comment? One minute, sir? So, Mr. Washington, you're forfeiting your time? Thank you. Okay, members, let's now take items... Start with item number two. Item two. No members on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That's approved. Members, let's now take items sixty-three to sixty-four and sixty-five. Got a little glitch here? We're good? Okay. Item sixty-three to sixty-five. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
There we go. Those are approved. Item number sixty-six. We had an amendment that's been circulated?
Yes, Mr. President. Sixty-six, there's an amendment. It's been posted, circulated, and before counsel, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's now take item number sixty-six. Sixty-six is now before us. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
It's approved. Item number sixty-seven is now before us, members. No speakers?
Mr. President, there's an amendment for sixty-seven. It's posted, circulated, and before counsel.
Very good. Thank you. Item sixty-seven. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved as amended. And item number seventy. Item seventy is now before us. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Seventy is approved.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue. Item one, aye to November 6, 2019, sir.
Without objection. That'll be the order.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the ordinances for two, three, four, five, as well as sixty-three, those are carried over one week to October 15.
Without objection. Let's bring up Mr. David Echevaria. He's speaking on item number 1A. Sorry, 1G. Correction, 1G. Thanks for your patience. I know you've been waiting.
Well, no. Somebody from Councilman Bonanza's office and DBS was explaining the situation. And I realized you got to do what you got to do, and it's the legal process. So I let her run the course and, you know, take care of what needs to be taken care of.
Very good.
We're good. I just wanted to make sure that they knew that I was here, and we'll figure it out. We're good.
Thank you. So item 1G is now before us? How about Rolando... Correction, correction. Is there a Rolando who's here? Yes. On item one, you pulled item 1G.
Excuse me?
1G. That's the item you pulled?
I'm here for the public comment. I'm a civil war...
Okay, we'll give you your one minute of general public comment. Thanks for your patience. Welcome. Rolando?
Give me one second. So I'm a civil war versus the Huntington Park Police Department, and the judges approve corruption of the cops. I have Sonia Aguilar, Police Department officer, telling me, "Put your zipper down. Let me get some dick." Saul Rodriguez assaulted me at court. He falsified paperwork. They got me for obstruction of justice, resisting arrest. I got, I purpured, so he admitted that he assaulted me. Judge Rolando Roscoe gave me a sidebar. She said, "Look, don't make it into a big scene." She tried to bribe me. Another corrupted judge. Marcelina V. Haynes, another corrupted judge. She's like, "You know what? Just get back with your baby mama. We're going to fix your life. You know, I'm going to give you some cash. We're going to get you a good record for all the false accusations." Detective Davis, Huntington Park Police Department, put a gun in my head and said, "Join a gang." I said, "You better kill me because when I come back, I'm going to kill every corrupted ass motherfucker there is." So I'm at civil war versus corruption. Either help or give me some justice.
Rolando, hold just time. Herman, you got to go.
Post-traumatic stress disorder, bro.
He is disrupting this meeting by waving his hand, and there's people behind you trying to listen to public comment. Sergeants, get Herman out of here. You've been warned. You know the routine. Get him out of here. Rolando, sorry about the disruption.
Sorry, bro. So anyways...
Hold on, hold on, wait. We want to respect your time, Rolando. Hold on. Madam City Attorney, you want a, for the record?
Yes, Mr. President. For the record, Mr. Herman continues to scream and shout in case they'd be able to pick up the sound. And he continues to shout. He's being escorted from the room.
Mexican, bro.
Okay, Rolando, finish your 12 seconds.
Okay, so then I have full custody of my daughter because my baby mama be bringing cops over. She had like two strikes. She's from the Mexican mafia cartel. She's like, "You're going to do what we want to do." Then they take away my daughter. I have full custody, and she gets beat up in DCFS. What is DCFS? Judge Joseph Marpet tried to bribe me, too, corrupted ass judge. He's like, "We're going to give you some weed. We're going to give you some hose."
Thank you, sir. Thanks for joining us this morning. Okay, item number one, Ms. Rodriguez, I believe you have an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that the lien amount for item 1H be reduced and confirmed at $1,054.
All right, I'll second that. So now, members, let's now take item number one. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
There we go. Item one's approved. Okay, let's take you back to general public comment. We have Frederick Silik. Frederick Silik. How about Kathleen Larson? Please come forward, ma'am. Thanks for your patience. Be given one minute of general public comment.
Thank you. Kathleen Larson, Friends of the Montecito. And it was an honor to be here for the salute to Dotson Wilson. And in his spirit, I'd like to say thank you. For item number fifty-five, at least you held it for an hour and a half. And you could also reconsider it. I realize that you voted for it. Friends of the Montecito recommend voting against it. Why? Because it is a developer's nightmare. It is a really complicated project. And it's also an embarrassment to the city of Los Angeles and all who blindly pushed it through. If it ever comes into being, it'll be a jerry-built disaster squeezed on 120 feet by 150 feet. So we urge you to reconsider this project, free the developer to do more beneficial projects, and put this in the reject pile. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your patience. Is there Lauren Natoli? Followed by Mia Hayes? Is there Mia Hayes here? No? Arnie Abrian? Is there an Arnie Abrian here? Please come forward. Ms. Natoli? One minute. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Lauren Natoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Unjust landlords are hiking up the cost of rents throughout Los Angeles City and the county, taking advantage of flimsy laws and municipal codes that allow them to force out their tenants. It's unfair to practically banish people from our city because of the economic and social structures that are dragging them out of housing in their own communities. With the swath of luxury developers swooping into L.A., there is no alternative for the people who have been priced out of their homes. The county does not meet the minimum low-income housing unit threshold, meaning there are no safety nets for people who are driven out. The county and the city needs to take a step forward to stop landlords from hiking rent prices and pricing out Los Angeles residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, ma'am? Please come forward. Yes?
Hi, I'm Mia Hayes, also known as...
Mia, thanks for joining us.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
How you doing, President? I would like to say thank you on helping me find the nature of my vice president of Marie Claire magazine. Right now, I need representation because I still have not received my money or spoke to any representative dealing with Marie Claire or Cosmopolitan or anything else that I have done. I haven't got a call back from Mr. Congressman Adam Schreef, which I have faxed over information August 27th. And I am not getting a response back from anybody when I speak to other officials. The officials is not doing exactly what I like as well. And so it is found to me underneath my investigation that other people is taking my bank slips and taking companies that I do have, and they are spending it on their own and having their own private service of security.
Thank you.
That's not my whole two minutes.
Thank you so much. Your time is up, ma'am. Thanks for joining us. Arnie, please come forward. Thank you. And Liliana Sanchez, please come forward.
Good afternoon, City Council. I would like to read a poem from William Seroyan. He said, "I would like to see any power in the world destroy this race, this small tribe of unimportant people whose words have been fought and lost, whose structures have crumbled. Literature unread, music unheard, and prayers are no longer answered. Go ahead, destroy Armenia. See if you can do it. Send them into the desert without bread or water. Burn their homes and churches, then see if they will not laugh, sing, and pray again. For when two of them meet..." For when two of them meet anywhere in the world, see if they will not create a new Armenia." From African-Americans who have survived slavery to afford their children and grandchildren the opportunity to become prominent figures of our community and fight for equality, to Armenians who survive genocide to afford their children and grandchildren the opportunity for a better life. All people want and need is a chance to prove, to serve, that they can get the job done, no matter what race or color they are. Being in a position to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Liliana?
Hi, my name is Liliana Sanchez. I serve on the neighborhood council for Sanlanta Hanga, but I am here to represent and speak only for myself. I was here just a couple weeks ago, November 28th, before the congress for neighborhood councils, and Mayor Garcetti praised us, our neighborhood council, for, you know, what wonderful work we do as volunteers. But something has been forgotten here. The city charter. And I am here to ask our council member Rodriguez, ¿qué pasó? ¿Qué pasó con la promesa de servir toda la comunidad y servir sin... without being biased? What happened? What happened to you taking input from the community? I don't understand. I'm asking that question, please take it to heart, and work with your neighborhood council.
Thank you. Sir, Nina, someone filled a card just by the letter A. No? Anyone? Please, thank you. How about Nina Royal? Followed by Elena C. C-E-E. Ms. Royal? Good morning, good to see you. Cindy Clegg Horn?
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Nina Royal, and I am vice president of outreach for the Sanlanta Hanga Neighborhood Council, but I want to be clear that I am speaking for myself only. I am angry with the council, especially Member Rodriguez. You all need to review Section 900 of the city charter, which gives our neighborhood council and communities the right to participate in decisions and have everyone's voices heard, and the ability to participate in decisions that affect the destiny of our communities. Councilmember Rodriguez pushed her item 59 through without any input from anyone in our community. We didn't find out for several days after our board meeting that the proposed existed, that the proposal existed, and had no time for community outreach. And you passed it without input from the public.
Thank you. Is there an Elena? Elena? Please come forward. Cindy, you're next.
Hi.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak. So, this really comes down to the naming of a public space without public input. It's not acceptable. I was at my first ever, I'm not usually involved, neighborhood council meeting last night. The land use committee voted either unanimously or with like one abstention, but overwhelmingly in opposition of the motion that you guys passed, without so much as a representative who was invited, somebody from councilmembers Rodriguez offices, no one showed up. So, the community spoke, and we're certainly asking for more time, more consideration. We'd like to also know how this all came about, because we're talking about naming the historic heart, which is, I think, the number two in the county historical site. It's 112 years old, as something that is very limiting. So, it's just, it's just not an acceptable thing that's gone on. We just, we need recourse. Thank you.
Lydia Grant, followed by... Oh, Cindy? Sorry. Come on up, ma'am. How about, then, followed by Lydia Grant?
Thank you very much, I'm Cindy Clegg Horn. I am secretary of the neighborhood council in Sanlanta Hanga. We have the highest voter turnout in Sanlanta Hanga in the valley. But I'm speaking for myself, I'm a woman business owner, my business is located on Commerce Avenue in Tahanga. I see hundreds of customers through the week. I'm here to plead with you fellow councilmembers to please help our councilwoman meet with us, to come to our neighborhood council meetings. Her constituents, all of her constituents want to see her, they wanna meet with her. I wanna thank Councilman Blumenfeld, and Lee, and Corretts for being at the Neighborhood Council Congress. We had over 900 people, it was a great day, and all the city departments and all who helped work it. But please help us with this situation with our councilmember. We want to meet with her. We want to talk with her. We wanna be face-to-face with her, and we are excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Washington? Dan Washington? How about Jacqueline Richardson? Please come forward, ma'am. And our last speaker, Carol Hutchinson. Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Good afternoon, thanks for your patience. I know you've been waiting.
Thank you. So, I'm Lydia Grant, I'm vice president of the Sanlanta Hanga Neighborhood Council. Today here, I am speaking on my own behalf. I'm also a former city commissioner overseeing the board of neighborhood commissioners or the neighborhood councils in the system. We have a system in place that allows the neighborhood council to give input to the city council on anything that affects their community. It's our job to get community input. I came to the committee, Councilmember Blumenfeld, Councilmember Martinez, know that I asked for postponement until our community could be heard. This is causing huge division in our community, and it's being allowed because nobody allowed our community to speak. I ask you that you stop this until our community gets a chance to speak. Our neighborhood council meeting is tomorrow night, and this was pushed through to make sure our community had no voice. I am also letting you know that I've waited over a year, actually fourteen months, for a PRA request that I put into our councilmember. As a neighborhood council leader, that's just really not acceptable service in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. or Mrs. Washington? No? Okay, how about Jacqueline? Ms. Richardson, thanks for joining us. Is Carol here, Hutchinson? Please come forward. Okay, go ahead, ma'am, one minute.
This concerns affordable housing. Apparently, $12 an hour for the five or six units I visited is not enough for the housing units that I went to. Some of those units, they start at four figures. $12 an hour does not fit that four-figure unit. However, if you know the magic words, you can get into that unit for far less than the average person. Some of those units are singles, and they're pretty small. I don't see how it's possible for that to cost four digits, four digits. $12 an hour doesn't fit it. Where does it begin where you can afford one of those units? Does it take $15 an hour, $16 an hour? Because $12 an hour hasn't made it through some of those units. But I heard some people say, "They don't have to pay market rates, they get less than market rates."
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Your name?
Yes, hi, my name is Carol Hutchinson. I'm a Sanlanta Hanga Regional Rep, but I'm here as a stakeholder because Monica has not, and this council has not given us time... Am I too loud? No. Monica has not given us time to weigh in on this, one of the topics, and that the fact that it was voted on without public comment, although several of us signed to give public comment, is kind of questionable. The whole thing is, is this has become a very divisive issue in our community, when everybody's saying, "The man hasn't had any connection to our town, give him a different intersection instead of our historic intersection." It's now become a racist issue. So she's creating division in our community, and it's despicable on her part to just not deal with our neighborhood council, to not deal with our community, to not have any input. Her representative came to our neighborhood council meeting on the day she signed this motion, and didn't even think to mention it to us. We wouldn't have found out if somebody hadn't told us.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Did I miss you, ma'am?
Yes, I have...
Please come forward, give me your name.
My name is Ms. Chel Blue.
Thank you, welcome.
Back in the 60s, when I was 10 years old, we picketed in front of Bolton Hall to save Bolton Hall. That's the intersection of Commerce and Belmont. It's a historical place, 100 and some years, the center of Tahanga. Has nothing to do with any other name than Bolton Hall at Commerce and Belmont. I oppose any placard, signage, anything. I oppose it. We had the historian of Bolton Hall History Museum here earlier, he had to go to open Bolton Hall Museum. He opposes this also. It's a historic area. It does not need a new name. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like our system just shut down. Do we have to go through the entire city council meeting again? Just kidding. Ms. Rodriguez, should I like to speak?
Colleagues, I just wanted to clarify the actual facts of the circumstances, and I'm very proud to thank you all for your support of William Saroyan Square. I wanna thank the two, over 240 members of the public that participated in that public process, as well as the public comment period that was honored in Public Works Committee, as well as, again, all the countless individuals that contributed their support. There was some dissension, but the overwhelming majority that supported this declaration at this particular intersection, to commemorate and lift up the contributions of an American writer, a very decorated American writer, whose likeness is reflective in the community of Sanlanta Hanga. So I wanna thank you for that historic opportunity, and invite you all to join us at the unveiling, which will also be held at our Armenian, our annual Armenian Cultural Festival. Thank you.
Just a second, members of the public, you've all given an opportunity to speak. Thank you very much. That concludes general public comment, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, I'm sorry, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanna recognize those who attended our first-ever Little Italy launch of Los Angeles in San Pedro. About 5,000 people joined us on Sixth Street, as we designated this part of San Pedro on Sixth Street. I wanna thank Mr. Corretts for joining us on Friday night, as we honored five key individuals with the Italian Spirit Award, and also John Lee, who made the trek from the most northern part of the district, who joined us festivities on Saturday night in San Pedro.
Great, do you have any leftovers?
To the Little Italy Los Angeles Association, thank you for partnering with our office, and to Sandra, Janine, and George for putting on and coordinating incredible event. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there announcements, members? Okay, Mr. City, do you have an announcement, sir? Nope. Okay, can we all rise for adjourned motions, please? Mr. Weezer, do you have an adjourned motion, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jesse Luis Valades Junior. He recently passed away due to cancer. Jesse was born on June 16th, 1974, in Orange, California, at St. Joseph Hospital, to Jesse Osvaldo Valades and Rose Ann Ramirez. Jesse attended Our Lady of Pillar School in Santa Ana and graduated from Al Camino in Placentia, California. Growing up in Santa Ana, he enjoyed going to East Los Angeles and Bull Heights with his father on the weekend to spend time with this family. Jesse followed in his father's footsteps and joined the Imperials Car Club. The Imperials Car Club was founded in 1965, in the heart of East Los Angeles, California. Representing the American West Coast traditional style of lowriders, as a member of the Imperials Car Club, Jesse held several positions where he served as vice president, secretary, and treasurer. He and his father are credited with bringing the lowrider car culture not only to the rest of the country, but internationally as well. In 1997, Jesse attended Fullerton College in Fullerton, California, where he met the love of his life, Isela Gomez. While at Fullerton College, Isela and Jesse joined the student organization Movimiento Studentil Chicano de Aslan, where they participated heavily in community and club activities. After a brief stay in college, Jesse decided to utilize his people and organizational skills, where he started working in supply chain management, where he worked as a warehouse receiver in a local warehouse. Jesse also supported his wife, Isela, and her love for Mariah Carey. Together, they spent an extraordinary amount of time at Mariah Carey fan events and attended many other concerts. If Jesse heard a song or saw her on TV, Jesse would always give her a call. Jesse and Isela loved to travel. In 2015, Jesse and Isela traveled to Japan at various car show events, and furthering the car culture, the East Los Angeles car culture. In 2017, Jesse and Isela traveled to Washington DC, where the famous Gypsy Rose was inducted into the National Historic Vehicle Register. For the first time in American history, a lowrider was honored on the National Mall. The specifications, photos, detailed scans, and entire life story were archived by the Library of Congress. This happened for the very first time in America's history. Jesse loved attending car shows and spending time with lowrider car enthusiasts. He enjoyed hearing stories about his father and the legacy and history of the Gypsy Rose. Jesse lived life to the fullest. We are saddened by his passing, and will continue to honor his legacy and contributions to American car culture and his community. Jesse is survived by his wife, Isela Valades, mother Rose Ann Ramirez, sisters Candice Guerrero and Cindy Valades. He is preceded in death by his father, Jesse Valades Senior, who passed away in 2011. The viewing is scheduled on Thursday at Rose Hills in Winter, California. Funeral services will be at St. Alphonsus Church in East Los Angeles. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Buscaino? Do you have an adjourned motion, sir?
Thank you, Madam President.
The family is with us this afternoon?
Thank you, Madam President, thank you. McCosker family, a family in San Pedro, a family, as we know, full of faith, of love, of public service, lost their dear brother, Michael Kevin McCosker. And I ask that we rise and adjourn in memory of Michael McCosker, who passed away suddenly on September 28th in San Pedro. He was a firstborn of William Kevin McCosker and Patricia McCosker, both lifelong residents of Council District 15. They raised six children in San Pedro. Mike came from a firefighter family, and he would go on to dedicate 30 years to the Los Angeles City Fire Department as an engineer, and eventually became the vice president of the Los Angeles Firefighter Association. He was hired in the city in 1978, and retired from the Los Angeles Fire Department after 30 years of service. He was assigned to multiple stations over the years as a firefighter and an engineer, and through his active service with the fire department, Mike also faithfully served the union, UFLAC, in several capacities. He held the positions of union director, vice president, secretary, and even served as business agent after his retirement from city service. He and his brother Pat were fortunate enough early on in their careers to serve alongside their father, who was also an active LA firefighter. And later in their careers, both Mike and Pat served together again as officers in the firefighters' union. Mike cared deeply about the men and women who served the city, and took on many causes for the good of the fire service, especially fighting for inclusiveness and diversity in the fire department. And as an advocate, he strove to protect the dignity of every single employee. And at home, Mike was a loving son, a brother, a husband and father, always working hard to benefit his family, his community, and the fire department. His sister Danny shared, were shattered. The world was a better place with him in it. Words cannot do justice to describe how truly special Mike was. His brother Tim, there was, there will never be, and never was, and never will be, a better brother than Mike. We're joined today by Mike's wife Shannon, Declan, his son, his daughter Siobhan, and brothers Pat, Tim, and John, son-in-law Richie, sisters-in-law Erin and Carla, his nephew Emmett, who also works for the mayor's office. So to the entire McCosker family, our hearts, thoughts, and prayers are with you today. And his many other family members, colleagues, and friends, we send our love and our condolences, Michael McCosker. May he rest in peace and may perpetual light shine upon him. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I'd like to request that you add us all to the adjourned motion. Mr. Buscaino?
I'm sorry?
Add us all to the adjourned motion?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Or condolences to your family during this difficult time. Ms. Rodriguez, would you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buscaino, and I just wanted to add my condolences. I think the McCosker family and name is synonymous with public service. Each of you have served in very powerful and meaningful ways. I had the good fortune of having an opportunity to meet Mike. Many of you know that I am too, part of the firefighter family, and I met him when I was first running for city council in 2007. And he was the one person who understood the contributions, and I understand how personal it is, but the contributions that so many of the members of our fire family make. And he was so generous and kind to me, and I will never forget that. So I just, my heartfelt condolences to you on this incredible loss, but we thank you all for having allowed us the opportunity to know him and to have him be of service to our city.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. Again, our condolences, may he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you.
Are there any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.
Honey, participate in the census.
Councilmember David Rue, LA Department of Transportation GM, Salita Reynolds, Office of LA County Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, and community leaders unveiled the Hawk Beacon, a high-intensity activated crosswalk on Sixth Street between Fairfax and Carson Avenues. The new crosswalk and signal has been shown to reduce the rate of accidents.
This is the first, it's an exciting day because this is the first Hawk Beacon that we have in the city of Los Angeles, but this will not be our last.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, Board of Public Works President Kevin James, and the legendary Sir Patrick Stewart, joined together to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Beatles iconic Abbey Road album. Officials also dedicated a crosswalk on Vine Street and unveiled a new City of LA sign at the Capitol Records Tower.
It's 50 years. It's their, one of their, you know, signature record companies where they recorded, and we're right in front and we get to celebrate Abbey Road's 50th anniversary with a crosswalk in Hollywood. How much better does it get?
Jazz filled the air as some of the best musicians gathered for the 43rd Annual Watts Towers Jazz Festival. The long-running event celebrates the culture and musical history of the iconic Watts neighborhood.
This is the 38th Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival and the 43rd Annual Honor Reveal, Watts Towers Jazz Festival. One of the things that we do is to ensure that our constituency have access to live musicians, no pre-recorded music.
I think to be able to keep it going constantly throughout the years, it's been great. People get together.
I mean, looking around at the community people here, they're all here enjoying it, taking in events. And what can you, I mean, it's free. You come in, you sit back, you get some live jazz. Yesterday they had the Drum Fest. Everybody playing drums. They love it. It's excellent for the community.
I think what the festival is doing, it's giving the people a sense of belonging. It's saying that we care about you, we care about the people that are in Watts. We want to bring good things to the community and we want people to embrace the goodness.
Young, old, that's what we're about. That's why we're here, so that people understand Watts is rich, it has something to give.
How do you get kids interested in exercise? Well, you make it fun, that's how. And one council member proves he's got the winning formula.
Are these kids up for the fitness challenge? Judging by their smiles, yes, they are.
I like the gymnastics, that's my favorite part because I love doing gymnastics. It's also fun being here with friends, having fun, laughing.
The good times taking place at Bellevue Recreation Center in Silverlake, site of gymnastics, yoga, and other activities to get kids pumped over physical fitness. The challenge is hosted by city councilman and former competitive gymnast Mitch O'Farrell.
When children feel good, they do better in school. When you exercise and eat nutritious meals, you have a better quality of life.
Around 105th graders from local schools are taking part in this fitness challenge. Today's very special guest is Olympic swimmer and reality TV producer, John Moffett.
It was around the 5th grade when Moffett discovered competitive swimming before making the 1980 and 1984 Olympic teams. Moffett is also the Emmy-winning producer behind CBS's The Amazing Race.
Learning how to work out and learning to deal with the discomforts of being an athlete, it really carries on throughout your life. It teaches you how to deal with other people. It teaches you how to forge on through adversity and forge on when you don't win. And these are all super valuable lessons that all of us can take with us throughout the rest of our lives.
The Department of Wreckin' Parks with its variety of youth programs is proud to be a partner.
High rates of obesity in children and diabetes and it's, it's really something that we really need to focus on.
This is a really uplifting, positive day and maybe this will be a source of inspiration to help someone to turn the corner, to maybe set them in a nice, new, good direction.
Students from Alexandria, Fletcher Drive, Vine Street, and others all took part. Do you love comics, gaming, and sci-fi? Then you won't want to miss Comic-Con. No need to go to Italy to get a taste of an authentic piazza and save the date for Indigenous Peoples' Day. All this and things to do. LA Comic-Con is returning to Los Angeles for its ninth year. Tens of thousands of comics and graphic novel fans joined forces in a quest to experience one of the most diverse and celebrated pop culture events in the country. This event plays host to over 800 diverse artists and vendors selling comics, collectibles, art apparel, and everything in between. Don't miss LA Comic-Con, October 11th through the 13th at the LA Convention Center. For tickets, visit showclicks.com. The Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles presents Taste of Italy, LA's premier Italian food and wine event. For one evening, the heart of historical downtown Los Angeles is transformed into a charming Italian piazza where guests can enjoy world-class wines and live entertainment. The Taste of Italy LA serves up deliciousness Saturday, October 12th, beginning at 5:00 PM. Indigenous Peoples' Day 2019 brings recognition and celebration to the city of Los Angeles. This year's theme will focus on the past, present, and future with a call to action for our state and federal lawmakers to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Answer the call and show your love at Indigenous Peoples' Day, Sunday, October 13th, from 4 to 9:00 PM, at Los Angeles City Hall and Grand Park. For more information, call Councilmember O'Farrell's District Office at (213) 473-7013. Don't miss it. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, or us on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. We'll see you next time for more of LA this week.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kim with the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. We're here to improve the quality of life, independence, health, and dignity of the older adults and family caregivers who live in our city. We have programs and services that cover a wide variety of issues facing both older adults and caregivers. Many of our direct services are provided through our local multipurpose senior centers. Our centers have access to care management, nutrition services, transportation, evidence-based programs, and more. They're also a great place for you to connect with others in your own community. If you don't know where to start, our helpful information and assistant staff are here to help. We're able to connect to your local center and other resources like health insurance counseling, elder abuse resources, and even job training opportunities. Also, did you know that if you provide unpaid assistance to an older adult spouse, family member, neighbor, or friend, you're a family caregiver? We have resources for you through our department's family caregiver training and support. For more information and resources, you can call us at (213) 482-7252, or simply dial 311. You can also check out our website at aging.lacity.org. Together, let's make Los Angeles the best age-friendly city in the world.